Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, January 21st, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, we'll do the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. We did not have anyone sign up to deliver an invocation this evening, so I'll be asking Commissioner Beaumont to do that if you would, please.
I'm here.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, he showed up.
Come on up. Great.
I'm a Phillyian, so for real.
You're just fine.
I'm sorry we didn't let you know. You get that information, too. Though is pray. God of love, we trust in you with all our heart and lean not on our own understanding. We acknowledge you in all our ways and in all the meetings of this Currituck County Board of Commissioners, so that you direct our paths. Father, we do not rely on ourselves for effective results, for we are only human and often make mistakes. It is you who knows all things. So, Lord, have your divine way in this meeting this evening and always. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any changes or additions for the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a couple changes to the agenda tonight, if I may. First of all, I'd like to move Item A, New Business, to go right after the manager's report. And I would like to add, under Board Appointments, I would like to add a recommendation for the ABC Board.
Number three, I guess, would be...
Yes, sir.
When that's number three, and that'll be for Vance Ilet.
Yes.
And Item A, just so everyone's aware, is a resolution in support of the rights afforded by the Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. And we've been hearing that a little bit earlier, so we have a packed house tonight. Next item on the agenda is Public Comment. Bobby Hannig is our first customer this evening.
We haven't approved the agenda yet.
Oh, sorry. Got ahead, Bobby. Excited to see you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Bobby. You didn't have to leave.
Yeah, I know this is like a practical joke on me. I get it. My name is Bobby Hannig. I live at 102 Orchard Lane in Powell's Point. It's great to be back here, and I appreciate you all taking the time to listen to my comments. It's pretty crazy how intimidating it is standing here even after being on that side of the...
It's different, isn't it?
Y'all take it easy on me. I stand before you, United, as a citizen and your state representative. Tonight, we'll be considering a resolution declaring Currituck a Second Amendment refuge. The Second Amendment to the U.S. Constitution provides that a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms, shall not be infringed. The North Carolina Constitution states the same. I remind you that despite how some people portray this right, it's not about hunting. It is about our God-given right to defend ourselves against a tyrannical government. I strongly urge you to stand with your citizens to ensure their Second Amendment rights are protected. As your state representative, I will stand with you and oppose any assault on this right. We, the citizens of this county and state, appreciate your willingness to stand with us. God bless Currituck, God bless North Carolina, and God bless you all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. All right. Next, we have Susan Powers.
Hello. I typed this up because I wanted to make sure to make all my points. My name is Susan Powers, and I live at 251 Greenville Road in Moyoc. I'm here tonight to ask you to vote against making Currituck County a Second Amendment city. I know that this is not a popular opinion, but you were not elected to do what is popular. You were elected to do what is in the best interest of the county. I want to point out that even though I do not own a gun, I'm not anti-gun. I don't believe government should outlaw all guns. Guns have an important role to play in defense and hunting. Some people just enjoy shooting guns for sport or fun. I have myself in the past. Citizens have a right to own the gun if they so choose, but you have to have some kind of rules and regulations regarding gun ownership. You can't let everyone who wants a gun own whatever kind of gun they want and however many they want. You wouldn't want to hand a violent felon a gun on their way out of the prison or allow someone making violent threats to shoot up a school to have a personal arsenal at home. And why stop at guns? Why...maybe we should allow citizens to have tanks or howitzers to defend their house. It's been a few years since I've been in school, but I learned that in the United States, the federal law is the law of the land, then individual state laws. Last are the local, city, or state laws. I think it sets a very bad precedence for our county to pick and choose what laws they are going to follow. And last, to me, the Second Amendment sanctuary city is such a vague idea. Who will decide what laws are enforced or not? The Board of Commissioners? The sheriff? Will you have another meeting any time a gun control measure is put into place to vote if you will follow that particular law? What right do you have to not enforce the laws of the United States and the state intended to protect me, my family, and my community's safety? Again, I ask you to vote no on this issue, and thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you for coming up. Right, Susan, is it HK Cole?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here in regard to growth of the county. I have about three or four items I'd like to bring up. Number one is schools. There's no sand. When you get behind, it's sure hard to catch up. And the next thing we come in will be portable schoolhouses. I've been involved in that. They're very expensive and not satisfactory to anybody. So, that's the first one. The second one is a drainage problem in the county. From the Swan River to the ocean, eastern North Carolina has a drain problem. We're going to have more of a drain problem because the State Highway Department says 10-foot, and we ain't going to clean the whole ditches out. And there's going to be more drainage with the rain coming down like we're getting now and so on and so forth. Every blacktop we put down, every piece of concrete we put down, every roof we build, water runoff. And you're going to have flooding. When you have flooding, we have septic tanks on every new house that went in the county almost, other than some in Moyoc. When your septic tanks start failing, you've got a problem. Because when they fail, that water's going to go in the sound. I am concerned about the sound. Most of all, the septic tanks now are what they call the raised septic tanks. You have to put sand down and raise them up. They have not really been around that long. And time passed, we've all, as all of us old county people, and I've been in the county for 50 years. I'd said from locko up, it was hard to get a septic tank put because of soil. Well, now then, you can put a septic tank about anywhere you want to if you put it up. At some point now, and this is some point, we are going to have to have a sewer system from the state line till cornshox leased for the time being. That's going to be a priority. When you cross a bridge, your soil down there is pretty decent for a septic tank. But the growth we have in now, we are going to have to have pretty much a central sewer system throughout the county. It's going to be expensive, but if you wait, it's going to be more expensive. So, I don't know how we're going to pay for it. Like I said, I've got five or six properties in the county, maybe more. I didn't count them. But I wouldn't mind paying extra taxes to get that because all of us in this room here, if you've got a septic tank, it's going to fail one of these days, and it's going to cost anywhere from $250 to $350 to get it pumped out. And that ain't no guarantee it's going to work no more. So, it's something you need to think about, and think about it hard. The next thing is trash on the roads. Again, you've got the same problem. The growth that we're getting, the way we're taking care of the trash, this ain't going to work. We're going to have to get something out of it. I know we've got some independent people coming around, but now you've got a problem with older people can't get to the dumps, and most of that goes in the backyard. I usually throw mine in the back of my pickup truck. By the time I get to the dump, I don't have anything in it. That's pretty common. Common for everybody to have a pickup truck. So, we do have a problem there. The thing with the growth, if the growth we're getting right now, I don't see how that we can sustain that much growth. One of these days, you won't get through Moyoc. You're going to have to have a pass to get through Moyoc, and that's a fact. You know what? I was here when they used to back up from Cornshox Swing Bridge to state line, and that'll probably happen again. The next thing is when everything opens up, if we keep growing, most of everybody works in tidewater. The morning traffic's terrible, afternoon terrible. Guess what? Same time the bus is running. Hello there, and in place of the bus getting on time, it'll be late. So, I don't know what we're going to do. I know you all hear the same thing. I'm probably telling you all the time, but I appreciate you telling and appreciation of listening to me. I'd be glad to answer any questions you got.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming up this evening.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I don't currently have anyone else signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak this evening? All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Next agenda item is Commissioner's Report. I'll begin tonight. Myself and the county manager have met with the school board this past week. Mr. Sefonics here. He's going to be doing a presentation in a few minutes. And the board just finished a work session this evening to discuss some budget issues with the school board. This past week, we had a meet and greet in Corolla, and there were...there are several more scheduled, and this is dealing with the election. I would encourage anybody to come out. If there's anyone near you, there's several scheduled around the county. Hear what the candidates have to say, hear what the sitting board has to say, the new commissioners have to say, and talk to them. Ask them questions. As we just heard, people have concerns, and we're here to help you if we can. So, I would encourage you to reach out to your commissioners, the new people that want to become commissioners, find out what their stance is and their thoughts. Our annual retreat will be in February, on the 7th and 8th. That's a Friday and a Saturday. This is a work session for us. We don't actually go anywhere. It'll be held here in the courthouse room, but that meeting is open to the public. So, if anyone has concerns about development, what we're doing, how we spend our money, all those things come into play at that retreat. We get together, we talk about whatever's on our minds, and some of it's pre-planned. Does that mean?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're good.
And go from there. So, that is open to the public. If you are interested in what's going on, where we're thinking about going, what we're looking for in the future, and specifically in the next year for the most part, stop by, drop in if you're able to. We started a Citizen Academy this year, and I believe we've had 11 people sign up. Is that correct, Ben? This came out of another work session we had, and it's designed to educate people on how our county government actually works. And so, if you're interested in that and understanding why we sometimes make rules or vote on stuff the way we do that doesn't seem to make any sense, there is actually a method to the madness, and sometimes we're compelled to vote on things a certain way. So, I would encourage you, if you're interested in that, please sign up for it. From what I'm hearing, it looks like it's going to be a pretty good deal and can help inform you about the county government and how it works. We also started an event assistance program, and that is a tourism-driven thing, and we put $100,000 aside, and this year, we had 11 applicants to come in to hopefully receive money from that, up to $20,000 in event. And the idea is to put money back into some of these events that are going on, help them succeed, help them become better and bigger events, and draw people into the county, and at the same time, hopefully create some jobs, create some new events, and have some people come forward, hopefully with some good ideas that are things we can do, especially in the off-season. Everything seems to be centered around the beach during the summer months, and everybody's in a stranglehold here, but we really are pushing towards fall events or spring events and things for people to do. So, look for those events that are coming out. And with that, I will close and toss it to Commissioner Payment.
Thank you. Just a couple things. I'm going to...Sunday, I'm going to let the Commissioner, the representative of district, Ms. Jarvis, talk a little bit more about that, but we did attend a nice event for Martin Luther King. And as far as the...just let people know about this resolution that's getting ready to come up. I have heard from a lot of individuals from my district, when they saw what was going on in Virginia, they had concerns, and they wanted to make sure that this board did stand behind our rights, and I assured them that this board stood behind the rights of the citizens. And this resolution that we're considering tonight just ensures the citizens understand where we stand with those rights, not setting any laws or anything like that in the county. So, anyways, I appreciate everyone out here tonight. We've got a lot to go over, and again, I'm just going to keep saying about our fire departments, keep them in your thoughts. A lot of fires this year, and they need our support out there. And with that, I'll just pass it on to the next Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Etheridge.
Thank you. Last week, I attended the social service meeting, of which I'm a member, and Director Hurd reported to the board the success of Operation Santa, and I look forward to her administrative report tonight. And I'd like to thank Ms. Hurd, her staff, and also the citizens of Currituck County because without you, it wouldn't have been the great success it was. Also, being the former Director of Elections, don't forget, March the 3rd is Election Day, and the last day you can register to vote is February the 7th, which is a Friday. And last but not least, I'd like to thank our Representative Bobby Hannig, who went to the march yesterday in Richmond. It made me proud to know that you were representing North Carolina. Thank you.
Commissioner Beaumont.
One of the issues that was raised during public comments, and it has to do with county growth, and I can tell you that there is no such thing as a static community or a static, you know, organization, if you will. Basically, if we're not growing, we're dying. So, while growth has its challenges, I can assure you, during my travels in the third congressional district that is around here, that is a far better problem to have than hemorrhaging at the seams and losing businesses, losing residents who give it all away and just leave town. The challenge for this board, and I can assure every single resident of Currituck County or every business owner in Currituck County, there is no more important issue that this board considers other than managing effectively the growth that we are going to have because we cannot, again, as Commissioner White had alluded to, there's some things that this board cannot change per North Carolina statute. Managing the growth is the challenge. Going back to the Citizens Academy, I'm sure some of the issues that are going to be brought or some of the topics that are going to be brought up is how we establish land use policy that is, in fact, that this board uses in ruling on some of our decisions. Guess where that comes from? That comes from community participation. If you don't like the county's policy on the UDO, for example, or on the land use plan, let me assure you, it's not our fault. We took the feedback from the community, and that's what we use to establish the policies that we apply with issues that come before this board. So, I encourage you, there are more advisory boards, and there are more places that you can volunteer your time, your expertise, and engage and help make this county make educated decisions. Because if you have a skill set or you have an opinion, and you don't let or don't participate, we'll never know what it is until you come up here during public comment. Yes. So, with that, I'm good.
Thank you. Let's record.
I have a couple things to add. Tuesday night, I attended the Parks and Rec Board. I'm the sitting Commissioner on that board. Numbers for 2020 of sporting events at our ballfields are up. We have a lot of events scheduled. Last year was a great year. 2020 looks even better. The Parks and Rec Department does a lot. We did really well in volleyball and other sports across the county and our region and bringing home a lot of championships and so forth. So, I just kudos to that. Sunday, the 12th, and also, I want to recognize our Representative Bobby Hannig. He was there in the pour and now rain, the Sheriff's Department, as well as the citizens in the county, the fire and EMS. We assisted with the wounded warriors in action escort. It was pouring now raining on the south end of the county, and there was multiple motorcycles, Commissioner Hannig, or not Commissioner, former Commissioner Hannig, now our representative. He was there in attendance, riding his bike. There was roughly, probably 120 vehicles escorting them out, as well as law enforcement and EMS, and I guarantee there was 1,500 to 1,800 people on the side of the road in Currituck County, residents supporting those guys. Brooke Sparks has been running that event for nine years, or this was the ninth year, yeah. And she does a phenomenal job, and it wouldn't be possible without her. So, I do want to recognize Brooke Sparks. Numerous hours that she puts into that, restaurants in the community, the hunters in the community, they take those guys hunting. You know, I mean, they serve this country, and they deserve respect. But like I said, I was a part of that in my other capacity as a sergeant at the Sheriff's Department. We drove and escorted those guys out. It was amazing how many people, citizens of the county, like I said, it was...Currituck on the Sound had about 60 to 70 people at the entrance of it, so I gave them like kudos to like probably the biggest neighborhood. Granted, it wasn't raining in that area, but like I said, that was a really, really good deal. You know, there's so many people in the community that do stuff for those guys. They look forward to it every year, and it was just an awesome event. I'm glad it fell on my shift's date to work because we got to help escort it out. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Etheridge.
Like Commissioner Payment, I'll let Commissioner Jarvis talk about the event that we attended on Sunday afternoon in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King. What we're hearing here tonight is what makes Currituck, I think, the best place in the world to live. We're talking about community involvement. We're talking about people coming out and supporting causes within the community. I'm very proud to say that we have a good county government. We are responsive to people's needs, and with the election coming up, there's no reason a voter cannot gain the information about the candidates by going to social media or any...anywhere on the internet. There's no reason for a voter to say they're not informed on who would be the best candidate in their particular interest. I'm not running for reelection, so I can say that and not be worried about being said that I'm doing it for political purposes. But folks, this is a critical election. I know we say every four years or every two years, this is the most critical election in our history, but this election will be, I think, by and far, the most critical election, not only on the local level, state level, and the federal level. So, make yourselves informed. Assume the responsibility of being a citizen by informing yourself of what the candidate stand for. Thank you, Mr. Etheridge.
Thank you. Mr. Jarvis.
I have a couple things to report. The first one is I attended the first Juvenile Crime Prevention Council meeting of the year, and one of the highlights of that meeting was for them to report just how successful our juvenile programs have been in this county in achieving their measurable goals. I was proud to hear that our teen court program is currently achieving 100% of the four goals that they set for themselves, including making sure that students don't slip up and repeat again, that they attend counseling, and they attend the programs. Our PASS program, which is the Partnership of Adolescents and Social Services, they are exceeding four out of their five goals. And once again, some of those goals include making sure that students get the counseling that they need. So, I would just like to say congratulations to all the people who work with the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council in helping our juveniles who slip up get back on track. I also attended the Trillium Northern Region Advisory Board, and while there's not much discussion right now of the Medicaid transformation due to the budget impasse, they assured us, Director Bland assured us, that they are continuing to respond to questions concerning the standard versus the tailored plans. And Mr. Baker noted that Trillium has been able to secure funding, and I hope I say it correctly, to purchase naloxazone kits for each of the counties to help the ongoing opioid crisis. And it's their hope that more kits may be purchased in the spring to help stop the terrible problem of the opioid crisis and overdoses. And finally, and I appreciate letting me speak about this, it was my pleasure to attend a celebration of the life and legacy of Martin Luther King Jr. this past Sunday, along with Commissioners Beaumont, Payment, and Mr. Etheridge at Corinth Missionary Baptist Church in Jarvisburg. While the singing and the sermons were top-notch, the most enjoyable part for me was to see the young people that were there that performed skits, that performed songs, that recited poetry, that talked about his legacy and the quotes, the many quotes that he had left in their impressions upon them. It gives me hope that we can set aside our political differences in this hostile climate that we have and have civil conversations to agree, to disagree, and go away as friends. It made me hopeful, and that's what I hope for 2020, is regardless of your party affiliation, regardless of how you vote, regardless of how you feel about the Second Amendment, to have good discussions and agree to disagree because that's what makes this country great. We all have an opinion, and we have the freedom to express it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next agenda item is our county manager's report. Mr. Stikeather.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of updates on some of the capital projects that we have going. The Maritime Museum over at Historic Corolla Park, the slab has been poured, and we expect to see still start to go up on that site sometime in the next month. It's moved along pretty well. Public Safety Building in the Commerce Park is going well. We've got most of the site work wrapping up, so hopefully we'll start to see some...you've got fill coming in there now where he had the undercut, but hopefully we'll see some foundation work in the next little bit. Both of those projects scheduled to open sometime in the spring of 2021, so it's going to be a busy, busy time for construction projects for the county staff. Had a meeting since our last meeting, I had the chance to meet and talk with Reed, Dr. Reed Corbett, with the Coastal Studies Institute. That was a really interesting meeting. He talked about some of the studies that they've been performing with the erosion data on the beach and also with some of the turbidity studies and the sound. So, that was really interesting, talking about the aquatic vegetation and why it's disappeared and how the sounds changed. Look forward to working with them over the next several years, trying to figure out some ways that we can look at the sound as a resource, like our marketing study pointed out that we had from Chandler Things as a tourism driver here, not just the beach. So, that was a really interesting meeting. One thing I wanted to mention is that the NCDOT is...they're giving members of the public a chance to provide input on their transportation projects. They'd like to see included in the 10-year transportation plan. That goes from 2023 to 2032. In Division 1, the comment period will begin during regular business hours from February 3rd through February 5th at the Division Headquarters. That's located in Edington at 113 Airport Drive. Since it's such a large division, obviously, those who can't make it to Edington there in those two days can contact Craig Midget with the Division 1 office at telephone number 252-482-1878, or at his email, which is camidget@ncdot.com. So, definitely, if you're a member of the public, we should have put this on our Facebook page today, if not today, tomorrow. Definitely take advantage of that, that, you know, like, NCDOT does give points based on how it scores for public input, and we've got some projects on there. And finally, the...had an update a couple of weeks ago on the Mid-Currituck Bridge. The project manager came and talked, said that obviously, there's still a lawsuit out there. They're going to move forward with every step they can before they handle the lawsuit, and that's going to be some permitting requirements they have to go through. And one of those permitting requirements is going to be through the U.S. Coast Guard, and so they're going to need public surveys for people who boat in the waterways, and it'll impact the design of the bridge, height of the bridge, that kind of thing. it'll impact the design of the bridge, height of the bridge, that kind of thing. So I just encourage the public to look out. Once we get that information or the surveys are available, we'll push that out to the citizens and let them know where they can fill those out. And that's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to have a groundbreaking for the Public Safety Building coming up?
We are. And I'm going to look at the clerk to make sure I get this right.
30th, 31st?
We are going to have a groundbreaking on January 30th at 10:30. It'll be Representatives of the Board of Commissioners. It'll be hopefully some of our state representatives. We've got representatives from COA and the contractors who are going to be on site. So we're really excited about that. We had the groundbreaking at the Maritime Museum. And one other project that we do have going on is going to be an ABC store, actually, in Corolla. So we're busy. I mean, capital projects-wise, we're very busy. Thank you, sir.
And the public is invited to the-
Oh, yes, sir. Anybody that wants to come out to a groundbreaking, come on out. You get to see all the gold shovels and everything. Yes, sir.
Get to see the gold shovels, man.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anything else for the county manager? All right. All right. Next item is a resolution in support of rights afforded by the Second Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Commissioner Owen Etheridge is the one that brought most of this to us. And I'll eventually be turning it over to him, but I thought I'd open it up to the board if anyone wanted to comment on any, any part of this before we gave it to Mr. Etheridge.
Mr. Chairman, I would. And, you know, and I'm sure Commissioner Jarvis could back right up on this. Part of the problem that we have is, to be honest, misunderstanding what the purpose of the Second Amendment is. And over the years, there's been much debate as to why it was passed and under what circumstances it was. And ultimately, when, when you look at our founding fathers and, and why the Second Amendment was created in the first place, it was to ensure a well-regulated militia, which, the definition of militia is pretty much a civilian army, right? And so one of the main purposes behind it was to ensure that our federal government would remain challenged by the ability of the population to fight back ultimately in the event of tyranny. And there's been many, many communities, many countries over the years that fell prey to excessive gun control. And as a result, their, their populations were, you know, and I can use the Jews in World War II, you know, as an example, as a preface. And the reality is, when you look at the original context of the Second Amendment, we have the right, of course, legally now, that's been somewhat restrained, but the interpretation of the Second Amendment is anything that the military has, and an earlier comment was on tanks and howitzers, is that if you could afford it, and you could be qualified to own it, i.e. trained, that you should be able to go out and buy it. And so, you know, that's the context of the Second Amendment. Now, do we give felons, you know, weapons coming out of jail? Absolutely not. And I don't think it's the intention of, of what our resolution this evening, that, that carpalange all rights of owning guns, that all, all regulations, all restrictions are removed. So I think the Second Amendment is, is the one that helps us keep the First Amendment rights. And so with that, I rest.
I think you brought up an interesting point. The, we do have laws in place to help protect us, and this is not in any way infringing on that. We recognize that a felon or someone who's gone to jail for maybe aggravated assault or any of those things is not someone who clearly should own a weapon, and therefore, their rights have been taken away from them. And so this is not, we're not putting forward a law at this time. We're just a resolution in support of the Constitution of the United States.
Mr. Chairman, may I say one thing? And I'm not going to get into a civics lesson here, but I could. I did that for 30 years. You're right in that local level laws have to follow the state laws, and state laws have to follow the federal government. But the federal government is bound by the Constitution. And the federal government can't pass laws against the Constitution. And while we're not here to debate and make laws, as the chairman just pointed out, we are here to say that the Constitution is the law of the land. And although the supremacy clause bounds us to follow federal law, the federal law is bound to follow the Constitution. And I think it's important to recognize that that is the law of the land.
Thank you. Anything further from the board?
I'd just like to say too, I mean, when I took my oath for this office, one of the things in there, when our clerk of court read that oath to me, was that I would uphold the United States Constitution, which I, I do value that. When I took my oath at the Sheriff's Department, which I've been there for about 18 years, that was in there as well. So I strongly support the Second Amendment, as well as the United States Constitution for that reason.
And just a quick little, I mean, I did speak earlier and commission comment regarding the support of it, but some good things said here. And, you know, the individuals that have been in the military also took an oath when they signed up to defend Constitution and protect the United States. And so again, we're just here to support and all that. And I said there's some good comments here, and I appreciate everyone. Thank you. That's it.
That's correct. Mr. Etheridge, you look like you're, you're ready.
We all should be ready as American citizens to protect the Constitution. I got a little book here I would urge all of you to get. It's called The Bill of Rights Primer. And it talks about the first 10 amendments to the Constitution of the United States. And on the cover jacket, there's a couple of sentences I'd like to read. Americans today tend to view the Bill of Rights, the first 10 amendments to the U.S. Constitution, as a set of rules guaranteeing individual rights and protecting the rights of minorities against the tyranny of the majority. But the founding fathers, that was not their main intent when they wrote the Bill of Rights. The Bill of Rights' original purpose was to defend the people of the new United States against an aristocratic and geographically distant, distant Congress, whose members many feared would act in their own self-interest. And when we talk about the Second Amendment as it pertains to Currituck County, the first thing I want to say is, this is not anything that's political. I've been thinking about this since the election in Virginia in November, hearing all the news reports of what was going to come down in terms of new gun restrictions and whatnot. And I waited until after the filing period for political candidates in North Carolina passed, so it couldn't be construed as a political action. It's intended to be a proactive, not a reactive. I don't want to wait and be like the state of Virginia. If anything happens and our General Assembly changes in terms of its political philosophy makeup, and we have to sit here a year from now trying to react to stuff that's coming down the pike. Currituck County has long been known as the sportsman's paradise. How did it get that, that motto? Because of hunting, primarily. Fishing also is included in that. But how could we claim to be sportsman's paradise if we don't protect, protect the rights of the individuals to, under the Second Amendment? I have a question for all of the individuals who are proposing gun legislation. What happens if your common sense, as is being called by many people, laws are put into place, and we don't see a reduction in gun crimes? What is the next proposal coming down the pike? Are we on that slippery slope? I use the analogy, how do you eat an elephant? You don't eat him one bite at a time because you can't. You just nip away at him until you finally eat him. And I'm afraid that's what we're seeing happening right now in our country. You know, I did some research and found out of all the mass shootings since 1982, 75% of them had been committed with legally purchased guns. So that raises the question, why not enforce the gun laws we already have on the books? And it was mentioned earlier about individuals who shoot up schools maybe, or mental health issues. Folks, we got to take a hard look at our, how we look at mental health. Individuals that work in that industry, and I think Commissioner Jarvis has heard it with her service on Trillium Board, they're very limited on what information they can relay on to law enforcement agencies if they have someone they suspect might be in that particular mode. And, you know, these are things that we need to think about. And one last thing, in 1963, there was a meeting between surviving Navy officers who were in the bombing of Pearl Harbor and surviving Japanese pilots who bombed Pearl Harbor and other military. And the question was asked by the Americans, why didn't Japan follow up and come on to the west coast of the United States? And it is purported that the report, or the response from the Japanese in attendance was, because Americans have guns. They have government-sponsored shooting events, private-sponsored shooting events. And the Japanese leaders were fearful that there'd be an America behind every blade of grass with a gun to defend his country. And that's why it was thought that they did not come on right behind. Because when you stop and think, the 75% of the Pacific Fleet was destroyed at Pearl Harbor or damaged. And it would have been weeks before they could have transferred from the Atlantic Fleet to the west coast to protect the west coast. We were very vulnerable at that point, and they could have easily, easily come into the west coast and gained a foothold. And I know there's a lot of historians that say that that was not the case. But when you hear that the people that were involved in the conflict make that statement, I have to lend a lot of credibility to that. So that's why I pushed this resolution forward. And I'd like to thank the county attorney for his help with it. He cleaned it up. I gave him a rough draft, but he put some very salient points in it. Do you want to read it?
I don't know if I can or you can.
All right. I'll read the motion, resolution, so everybody understands what is actually in it. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners for Currituck County, North Carolina, in support of rights afforded by the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution. Whereas the Currituck County Board of Commissioners supports the United States Bill of Rights, reinforcing guarantees of individual rights and limitations of federal and state governments. And whereas the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution provides that, A, well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. And whereas, similarly, Article I, Section 30 of the Constitution of North Carolina, provides in part that, A, a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. And whereas, in District of Columbia versus Heller, 554 U.S. 570 208, 2008, the United States Supreme Court held that the Second Amendment protects an individual right to possess a firearm unconnected with service in a militia, and to use that firearm for traditionally lawful purposes, such as self-defense within the home. And in McDonald versus the City of Chicago, 561 U.S. 742, 2010, the United States Supreme Court held that the right of an individual to keep and bear arms, as protected by the Second Amendment, is incorporated by other sections of the Constitution against the states. And whereas, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners is concerned about any effort by the North Carolina General Assembly or the United States Congress to enact legislation infringing upon a citizen's individual right to possess a firearm and to use a firearm for traditionally lawful purposes, as the United States Supreme Court has interpreted the Constitution. And whereas, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners supports the decisions of the United States Supreme Court that interpret the Second Amendment as giving individuals the right to bear arms and use firearms for traditionally lawful purposes. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners for Currituck County, North Carolina, that Section 1, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners supports the Second Amendment right of a citizen to possess firearms and to use firearms for traditionally lawful purposes. Section 2, in support of the citizenry's Second Amendment rights, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners will take all necessary steps within its power to ensure that legislative bodies do not enact legislation affecting the Second Amendment right of citizens to bear arms and use firearms for traditionally lawful purposes, including lobbying of legislative delegations and intervention in litigation challenging such legislation. Section 3, as further indicative of support for rights afforded citizens by the Second Amendment, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners declares Currituck County to be a Second Amendment refuge. And if adopted, it will be adopted the 21st day of January 2020.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Was that a motion?
Yes, a motion.
There was second from Mr. McCord. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Or any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you again.
All right. Next up is administrative reports. Item A, First Solar Donation Presentation to Currituck County Department of Social Services. Yeah, Mr. Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I'm Josh Bass, President of the Currituck Chamber of Commerce. We have with us today First Solar Company. They got involved with the chamber and in our community right around December. And they kind of asked, well, what can we do since we're getting involved in the community to be a good community corporate partner? And we talked about some different things. And what we came up with was the Operation Santa Claus program that Social Services does so well every year. But unfortunately, we were a little late for 2019. So they said, well, to support that program, they want to make sure that they're going to be the first donor for 2020. So we are here. So I'm going to ask Amanda Mack with First Solar to come up, and then we'll do a check presentation to you. Don't worry, we have an actual real check, not the big check. Because I don't think Town Bank will cash the big check.
Happy Gilmore.
Thank you.
Chair and Board of Commissioners, since we are very thankful to learn about and become part of the Currituck County community, and we hope this donation will help brighten a child's life here in Currituck while easing the burdens of those families who may otherwise be struggling with having to choose between putting, with, with having to choose between paying a bill or putting a present under the tree. On a personal note, this gift is near and dear to my heart. Growing up, I was that family, and I was that child. We don't know where our efforts will be in this community or in this county 12 months from now, December. But we wanted to make sure that we were able to give back when we had the means and ability to do so. And because of that, that's what we feel community is, and that's what it means to us. And we're proud to be a part of Currituck County's community. Thank you.
That's it. It's not our moment in the sun, it's yours.
Commissioner Etheridge should be up there, since she's on the Social Services Board.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
They're not going to let us see the check.
Right.
We'd like to know what the check is for.
Operation Santa.
The amount.
The amount. It's $1,000.
Thank you.
All right.
We need a bigger check next time.
Right. All right. Thank you. And that, that's an easy segue into our next agenda item, Social Services Department report from the director, Ms. Samantha Hurt.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. And thank you again for Solar. It is really an honor to be here this evening and speak with you about the highlights of the 2019 Department of Social Services Operation Santa program. It's really a wonderful program. It's really a wonderful program, and it's very special and important. It's also, um, unique. It's one of the unique things that we do in Currituck County, um, in terms of what we do at Social Services. It is, um, Social Services is built on so much of the, um, programs that we do are required by statute, they're required by federal and state law, but this one is not. This one is completely independent and voluntary and really originated because of the need in the community and due to the, um, overwhelming support in the community, people that have, um, very warm hearts and want to be generous to help support children at Christmas time. So it's my pleasure to present some details. And there we go. Okay. Um, so the first thing that I wanted to share with you is just the basic framework of how our program operates. It all begins with an application. Um, we, we open applications usually in the fall for about a six-week period, and, um, you have to be a resident of Currituck County in order to apply for Christmas assistance. And once a person submits their application, we review the application, uh, they, uh, provide us with demographic information, financial information, we ensure that the need exists, and then we begin the matching process. The first thing that we do is we match a person with a sponsor. And you see there's a variety of sources there, four main sources that we utilize. Um, the first one that we try and exhaust is traditional sponsors. So that's, um, individuals in the community or businesses that contact us and say that they would like to sponsor a child for Christmas and provide the gifts for that child, or sometimes many children and multiple families. Next, we have organizational referrals, and those are independent standalone organizations that, um, operate and have their own rules and regulations, but they rely on us to provide information for citizens that need the support. Um, those programs don't necessarily have application processes of their own, so they rely on us to provide that information. The next source is donated gifts, um, people that donate toys and other resources to the agency. And last but not least is monetary donations. So we try very hard to exhaust all the other avenues before we utilize the monetary donations. And I'll explain why that is in just a moment. So in 2019, we served 321 children. We serve children from infancy through the age of 17. The gifts that we receive either through sponsorships or donations must be new and unwrapped, and we do that for safety reasons. And we don't set any strict contribution guidelines. Uh, some programs do, they have a fixed dollar amount that they want sponsors to spend on children, but we don't. We found that that's never been an issue in Currituck County and has never been a, a thing that we had to address. Um, we partner with other sister agencies that also are providing Christmas assistance to make sure there's no duplication of services, because when that happens, it really reduces the overall amount of children that can be served. And the contributions that are made to the Department of Social Services Operation Santa program are tax deductible. We provide a receipt for tax purposes. In 2019, we received a total of $10,225 in monetary donations for the children's program. And for the adult program, because we also collect separate donations for our adult wards, uh, we received a total of $2,000 even for the adults. Um, of the money that was raised for the children, um, a very important noteworthy mention is Bill Noons and his team with planning, they held a raffle of a generator, and through that, they generated $1,500 for the program. We took in 367 toys that were donated at our front door, and the Hearts of Hope Organization donated 1,500 stocking stuffer items. This next graph represents what our traditional sponsorship base looks like. Um, and you can see that the, the large purple one, the 34%, those are, um, individual, private, uh, private individual citizen sponsors. Um, the next, second to them would be the 25%, and that's the Corolla Ascension Community Association. And then there's lots of smaller percentages, but what's really important to impress upon the community is that we need the support of everyone. It all counts, and we couldn't do it without the 2%, we couldn't do it without the 34%. It is all so critically important. And I just wanted to thank everyone who has contributed so much over the years to this program. The next slide demonstrates the organizational referrals. Um, on the side column, you'll see the number of children that were referred to those programs, and the names of the programs are on the bottom. And those are the independent programs that kind of operate on their own, but they rely on us to provide the application information. And you can see that Toys for Tots by far and away, um, serves a, a great number of children, almost 100. And that's another piece of our application process that we use. So we start, um, with the traditional sponsor, the organizational sponsor, and any children that we can't match through those, uh, processes. Toys for Tots will usually tell us a number that they can absorb of the children that have not yet been sponsored. And year after year, they take a significant number of our children. And that is Lee and Anita Waterfield over in Knott's Island that have been running that program for the last couple of years and really do a phenomenal job. And you see, um, last on there is the Social Services monetary donations. So of the $10,225 that we collected last year, we only had to spend, um, a few thousand of that to match children that were not, um, met with traditional organizational sponsors. We also pay for our foster children's Christmas through that fund. Um, so we're starting out 2020 with a surplus, which is a good thing. Um, there's a lot of variables, um, that can affect us. Um, Currituck County is a coastal area, and so if we had a, a storm in the fall or something that could impact the region, it would also affect donations. Um, one-year donations were so low and sponsorships were so low that the Department of Social Services had a telethon with Wavy 10 News. Um, so we never want to have ourselves in a position where we have to turn children away. So having that surplus in there, um, gives us that little buffer, because there's other variables that you can't predict. You never know how many children are going to apply. Um, sometimes there's fluctuations of 150 to 200 children from year to year, um, that we might need to support, and also our foster care numbers can increase. So it's a good thing to have that buffer. The other piece of our Christmas program is the food baskets for the elderly. And that's probably an antiquated, uh, uh, term now that we use. We probably need to look at refreshing that, because this program does not just serve the elderly, it also serves disadvantaged adults. And some of them are young adults that the Department of Social Services is providing programs to. And what this is, is grocery assistance. So typically, and definitely in 2019, Corolla Chapel served, uh, 25 individuals, they provided eight bags of groceries, and they're not just the box goods that are in that picture. They're frozen turkeys and hands, and they do a really, really nice job. Um, they also provided each person with cash and gift cards. Private individuals donated $1,100 in gift cards for groceries. This last slide, or almost last slide, is just some pictures of the Department of Social Services staff and volunteers administering the program. Um, there is a man, and I can't remember his name, from Corolla Chapel that rents that Penske truck every year on his own and brings up all of the, uh, the food baskets and all of the toys for the children that they've sponsored. And it takes a while to unload that truck, it is really full. Um, and then you see other staff, you know, stocking stuff, stuffing stockings, and, and it's like an assembly line that we have at Social Services, and it really is quite fun and enjoyable. Um, so if you would like to be a sponsor, or if you have any questions, or anything you would like to, um, do to participate in the program, please don't hesitate to contact me. Uh, my number is listed there, and we also have an independent email address for Operation Santa, so that doesn't get mixed in with any other county business. So that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
I'd like to comment, uh, now that you've got this big check over there, a couple of us business owners, especially Commissioner Payman over here, are going to have to, they put the gauntlet down for next year.
Okay. Sounds like a challenge.
Right.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for all you do for our community.
Thank you.
It's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next agenda item is, uh, Currituck County Schools. We have Superintendent Mark Stefanic here this evening. Mark, you might want to wait just a second, let them filter out.
Thank you.
I come this evening, I just to give you a brief update on where we are, and, uh, embarking on the new school process.
Uh, just going to turn you on.
Got it. There were some, uh, comments, uh, earlier in the board meeting about, uh, growth in the, in the community, and, uh, and we've had some growth, and, uh, the, uh, exciting thing about that is, uh, some of the folks that are part of that growth are children. Uh, and, uh, at times when enough of them show up, uh, we have to, uh, embark on, uh, a process to build a new school. Uh, we're excited about, uh, the process coming forward, uh, and, uh, just give you an update on, on where we've been and where we're going. Um, the process began with a joint committee, uh, of, uh, some county commissioners and school board members, uh, evaluating some sites, uh, that were presented, um, that evaluated well, uh, through preliminary, uh, planning department, um, studies. Um, after we studied, uh, that group, we came up with, uh, uh, three or four. Um, I liked one, nobody else was really excited about it, but I put it on, so that was the fourth one. Uh, it didn't gain too much traction, but, uh, I still liked that one as a, as a possibility. Uh, but we had three, and we took it to our Board of Education. Uh, the Board of Education evaluated the sites, and, and they've narrowed it down to, uh, to two. Uh, we have a front-running site, uh, but, uh, we'll call the, the second site Plan B. Uh, and what we, uh, would like to do is we would like to have almost simultaneous, uh, negotiations with the, um, the two, uh, property owners or representatives of, of the property owners. Uh, because two things that we want, uh, for the project, uh, one, we want, uh, to make sure that, uh, the price is right, uh, for all, uh, parties involved. Uh, and the second thing is, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, we have the land, uh, contract or, or deed in hand, uh, by June, um, so that it doesn't, uh, impede our, um, our goal of having the school open, uh, by August of 2023. Uh, so, uh, our lawyer, uh, for the school district, uh, is going to have a planning meeting with our board chair and myself, uh, later this week, uh, and we'll get ready to, uh, begin the negotiations process with the, uh, the two properties and see, uh, what positive, uh, results we can get out of those negotiations.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just step in, just so everybody kind of knows the timeframe that we're on. Um, he mentioned June, it's important to have the property secured by the end of June. So that gives us six months to, um, get design build professionals in so that we can start the design process in January of 2021, which should put us on track to open a school in August of 2023. Um, we have looked at some preliminary numbers, um, budget-wise, uh, gotten a preliminary plan together, myself and the finance officer from the county. Um, one important factor, and the school board is aware of this as well, is that what, the budget is all-encompassing. So the budget that we come up with is going to have to include land, design, construction, and what we call FFNE, fixtures and furniture and equipment. So I just want to kind of put that out there. So, thank you.
And, and as an educator, uh, as much as we possibly can, uh, we'd like to have the very, very, very high percentage of that money, uh, go into the actual structure, uh, and the, uh, equipment and, uh, furniture in the building for the, uh, the students and their teachers. Uh, and so, uh, as, uh, as good of a price we can get, uh, for the land, and as good a price as we can get for the planning, uh, pieces, uh, we'd like the vast majority of that, uh, budget to go towards, uh, the students and the staff of, of that new building.
Great. Anything for Mr. Stefanic?
We were talking about planning, since it's an elementary school. Are we thinking about using the plan that was used for Jarvisburg, Shawboro as being the plan for the new Moyock Elementary?
That, that's one of the designs, uh, we'll definitely consider, uh, but, um, that design is, uh, about 10 or 11 years old right now. So the state has a, uh, a pool of approved, uh, designs that have happened over the years, and we can look at, uh, some of the designs in, in that last decade, uh, since those buildings, uh, were built to see if there's, uh, uh, anything new under the sun, uh, that we'd like to incorporate in the, in the new building.
Because they were prototype school designs.
Yes. They're, they're definitely in the, the consideration, uh, is my understanding that, uh, both of those schools are, are from the same design. Uh, they just, uh, uh, didn't build out the, uh, hallways at Jarvisburg to the, the full length that they are at Shawboro. Uh, and so, uh, there's, um, there's a potential there to, uh, make Shawboro a little bit bigger. Uh, but if we take Shawboro's design, expand it a little bit, um, to, to get it to the, uh, the target of 750 students, um, we can see if that, uh, that design comes out as the, the most preferable one.
And it's a little bit of a history lesson, the reason we use those, that design was it had been built several times before, and all the kinks were worked out of the project. Well, not a lot of change orders.
So, uh, as a point of reference, uh, elementary school wag budget number to build a elementary school is?
So, um, a, a wag would be $25 million.
So right around $25 million, and he scurried out before I had the ability to nail him with this one, but, uh, Representative Hennig has been very, uh, uh, forceful on, in the, the state, and has actually got legislation before our governor, if he would ever sign the budget, um, that would commit 11 million towards the construction of that elementary school. So we have a lot to thank, uh, Representative Hennig for, because almost half the price of that school, the state will be paying for, which, as a taxpayer, is good for us.
Yes, yes, sir. Um, that 11 million would definitely help. We have, um, myself and the finance director have looked at a scenario with and without the 11 million, just in case. Um, without it, without getting into a whole lot of details, we need to fine-tune a little bit more, but it would require, um, dipping into different funds that we have in those fund balances. Um, we don't anticipate, um, a tax increase for this facility. Um, however, what that's going to do is put a debt load on us that the next time that we need a school, it, it's going to be tough to do it without some form of a tax increase, just full disclosure, so.
But not now. But not now. All right. Anything further for Mr. Stefanic? Mark, thank you so much for coming out this evening, we appreciate all your efforts.
Appreciate you folks.
All right. And with that, I'll call a brief recess, uh, and, uh, take five minutes before we dip into the next, uh, agenda items. Thank you. Back into order and move on to public hearings. Uh, item A, PB 19-23, Clear Tower Company LLC. Clear Tower Company LLC has requested a major site plan use permit for a communication tower on Lot 10 in LeWark subdivision in Corova. Tax map 101B, parcel 10, Poplar Branch Beach Township. And at this time, I need to swear in anybody that's going to be participating in this that's, uh, here to offer ev- whoa.
Good save.
Good save. You're not getting it out of that easily.
Yeah.
All right. We need to get everyone, the left hand on the Bible and right in the air. There you go. Thank you. You all saw me swear the testimony you're about to give will be truthful. Thank you. All right. And, uh, who's getting this one, Mrs. Cicero? Ms. Jenny, there she is.
Make sure you can hear me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the board. Before you this evening is a request for a use permit. The applicant, Clearview Tower Company, II LLC, has applied for a use permit to construct a 150-foot telecommunications tower on property located in the off-road area of Corolla. The subject property is located near milepost 15 and a half in the off-road area. It's approximately two and three-quarter miles north of the four-wheel-drive beach on-ramp, uh, southwest of Swan Beach, where Swan is where you see Sand Fiddler, Sand Piper, and Ocean Pearl on the map, and also, uh, southwest of Seagull Beach. Um, I say southwest because the sighting of the tower is towards the rear of the property, the western part, so it actually is southwest of, of Seagull. The property is owned by the Corova Beach Volunteer Fire Department and Rescue Squad Incorporated, and the tower will be owned by the Corova Beach Volunteer Fire Department and used in part for emergency communications. The property is zoned SFR, Single Family Residential Outer Banks Remote. The surrounding property is also zoned SFR and consists of residential dwellings and vacant property. The Unified Development Ordinance allows a freestanding communications tower in this zoning district, the SFR zoning district, subject to a use permit. The ordinance states that emergency communication towers owned by a volunteer fire department that are used wholly or in part for public safety or emergency communications purposes are exempt from the specific standards for telecommunications towers in the ordinance. The proposed tower and site will comply with, even though it's exempt from some of those standards, it, it will still comply with the majority of those standards. The tower will meet the 190-foot maximum height requirement, again, the, the tower- 190-foot maximum height requirement. Again, the tower is proposed to be 150 feet tall. The tower will meet a 1,000-foot setback requirement from the mean-high watermark of the Atlantic Ocean. And the tower is not proposed within four miles of the existing tower at 2169 Ocean Pearl, which is where the Corova Beach Fire Station is located. In addition to the use permit, site plan approval is required. The use permit, you will hear the site plan will be completed through the TRC and the review process. But here's a look at the proposed site plan. As I mentioned before, the tower site is located to the rear of the property. So just to orient you back to where you are on the map, it's down, can you, thanks. So that's the tower location proposed. Again, it's proposed to be 150 feet tall with a 6-foot lightning rod. In order to minimize the disturbance to the site, the applicant has proposed access along an easement at the northern property boundary. The applicant proposes to screen ground-based equipment with an 8-foot-tall opaque fence. Heritage trees have been identified in the lease area, and any trees removed will be required to be mitigated per the ordinance, and heritage tree requirements will be addressed through the site plan review. The technical review committee recommends a few other conditions of approval, and I'd like to review those and kind of the thought process behind some of those recommendations, particularly regarding lighting and camouflaging of the tower. So the applicant provided documents that indicate the FAA does not require lighting of the proposed tower. However, staff recognizes that future development of the site may include a fire station and helicopter landing area, and evaluation of tower lighting by the FAA may be needed in the future. In deciding this use permit, staff suggests that the board include a condition that lighting requirements be evaluated by the FAA prior to construction of a helicopter landing pad, if it's proposed and built, and if lighting is required on the tower, it shall comply with the minimum FAA lighting standards. Regarding camouflaging, the applicant is open to painting the tower to camouflage it with surrounding area. However, in speaking with our airport manager, he mentioned that camouflaging the tower may hamper visibility for aircraft. For that reason, staff suggests not requiring the tower to be camouflaged. A community meeting was held on July 16, 2019, and a summary is provided, a summary that was written up by the applicant is provided as part of your agenda packet. The technical review committee recommends adoption of the use permit, subject to the following conditions. The application complies with all applicable review standards of the UDO, provided the following outstanding items are addressed. A, site plan approval is required by TRC upon adoption of the use permit. B, a heritage tree mitigation plan shall be submitted and approved through the site plan review process. And C, an exterior lighting plan shall be provided and approved for any ground-based lighting. The conditions of approval necessary to ensure compliance with the review standards of the UDO and to prevent or minimize adverse effects on the development application on surrounding lands include: A, the tower shall be owned by the Corova Beach Fire Department and Rescue Squad, and used in part for public safety or emergency communication purposes. Corova Beach VFD shall have space on the tower for telecommunications equipment. B, before obtaining a building permit, the applicant shall submit to the county engineer engineering drawings for the tower, sealed by a registered engineer, and include a statement that the tower meet all applicable local, state, and federal building codes and structural standards. C, every two years after construction of the tower, the owner shall submit to the planning director a statement of the tower's structural soundness that is signed and sealed by an engineer. Every six year, the statement shall be signed and sealed by an independent registered and licensed engineer. D, if lighting is required by the FAA, it shall comply with FAA standards. Unless required by the FAA, strobe lights shall not be used for nighttime lighting, and lighting shall be oriented so as not to project directly onto surrounding property to the maximum extent practicable. If construction of a helicopter landing pad is proposed in the future, the tower shall be reevaluated by the FAA for lighting requirements, and if required, the minimal lighting shall be provided. E, and this is a staff condition, because the applicant is proposing access along the easement, staff suggests, including this condition, that the applicant shall provide legal access for county employees to inspect the site during construction and thereafter, to ensure compliance with use permit conditions.
I'm sorry, what did you say the applicant was suggesting to do?
They're, back on the site plan, they're actually using an easement for access to the property that runs on the north.
This easement right here is what the applicant is proposing to use to access the construction area and just like come through here, down the property lines back here, and come here to the tower site in the rear of the property.
Okay. So, and you guys are comfortable with that? I think at this point?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I might ask, that easement, I mean, that will stay far as like when, you know, for just basics? That's not going to, I mean, just for construction, that's going to stay far?
Right. So it's construction and afterwards. If we have to do use permit inspections or future inspections.
Thank you, Jen.
Condition F, the exterior appearance of ground-based accessory structures shall be designed to look like a residential structure typical of the district. And G, install an 8-foot-tall opaque wooden security fence to screen the leased area, buildings, and equipment. A use permit shall be approved on a finding that the applicant demonstrates the proposed use will meet the following findings. That the use will not endanger the public health or safety, it will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands, and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. The use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans, and it will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. And typically, staff takes responsibility for those last two findings. The first being that the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. The 2006 land use plan classifies this site as limited service within the Corova subarea. The policy emphasis for the Corova subarea identifies the lack of infrastructure and services in this remote area of the county, and the plan does not support investments that could stimulate growth and development. The policy emphasis also allows only services that protect the health, safety, and welfare. It is staff's opinion that a telecommunications tower that improves emergency communications and limits adverse impacts to adjacent residential areas and land uses is consistent with the county's adopted plans. The proposed use is in keeping with the policies of the 2006 land use plan, including Special Policy applicable to the Outer Banks Policy OB-1, Crete County supports the provision of infrastructure and services adequate to meet basic quality of life and public health and safety requirements of residents on the Outer Banks, while at the same time not stimulating inappropriate intensive development in environmentally fragile, hazardous barrier island areas. And Community Appearance Policy CA-7, the county shall continue to monitor the placement of communication and other towers in Crete County, and shall take action as may be determined necessary to regulate the design and location. The second finding that staff takes responsibility for is that the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited to schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement, and other facilities. Staff's suggested finding is that the proposed use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. The use may increase the abilities of the county and Corova Beach Volunteer Fire Department to provide fire and rescue services. And thank you for your attention. That concludes my presentation of our staff report.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Turner? All right. Thank you. I'll invite the applicant up at this time to present their case. If you would, please state your name and record, for the record, please. Name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair White, Commissioners. My name is Ben Gallup. I'm an attorney with Hornville Riley Ellison Mailman. My office is in Nagsid, North Carolina. I'm here representing Clearview Tower, Inc., II, or Clearview Tower II, Inc., the applicant tonight, who is seeking a tower. I'm going to try and keep it as short as I can. Staff covered most of the four standards that we need to show that we comply with. I will need to put on a little bit of evidence and testimony to show the others. If I can start first with calling appraiser, Mr. Kirkland, to the stand.
We'll do our best to share the microphone.
Okay. Well, we can pick you up. We got one over your head as well, so.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Can you state your name for the record, please, Mr. Kirkland?
Richard Charles Kirkland, Jr.
And what do you do for a living?
I'm a certified general appraiser.
And have you been asked to perform any appraisal work in this case?
I have.
Okay. And did you prepare a study of your appraisal report?
I did.
And is it the same document that's located at pages 45 through 59 of the agenda packet?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And does that study include all of your opinions, bases, and assumptions for those opinions?
It does.
Okay. And it's the last page, on page 58, 59, your curriculum by time?
Yes, it's there.
And is it accurate as of today?
Yes.
And do you have any, does your background give you any specialized or exceptional knowledge that can help this board understand the appraisal and valuation of property?
Yes.
Okay. I would tender, Mr. Kirkland, and one last question. Have you previously testified and been tendered as an expert before this board?
Yes, I have.
Okay. I would tender, Mr. Kirkland, as an expert in appraisal.
Thank you. I'll accept that.
Thank you very much. And were you asked to, have you developed an opinion as to whether or not this proposed use will injure abutting or adjacent property values and be in harmony with the area in which it's located?
I have.
And what is your opinion?
It's my professional opinion that this will not have a negative impact on the adjoining property values, and that is in harmony with this location.
Thank you very much. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Kirkland?
I'm assuming, and I believe I read through in your packet, that you had looked at similar instances where cell towers or communication towers had gone up in residential areas or near homes, and to arrive at your finding.
Yes, sir. And specifically, I looked at a similar monopole there in Corolla.
Okay. Thank you.
And did you, you've ridden out and seen the property and seen the other monopole as well?
I've seen the property.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? All right. Thank you much.
Thank you very much. And now I'll call Mr. Steve Mahia, who is, I'll let him tell you what his title is with Clearview.
Okay.
Mr. Mahia, could you tell the board who you are and what you do?
Sure. Steve Mahia, President of Clearview Tower Company II LLC.
And you reviewed the narratives and other information that were provided in the packet, the agenda packet to the board?
Yep, yes, sir.
And are all the statements in there that were attributed to Clearview true and accurate to your knowledge?
Yes.
One of the standards that we, that the staff didn't go through was whether or not the tower will affect public safety. Can you explain how it won't negatively affect public safety?
Well, the purpose is to improve public safety. The primary purpose of the tower is to improve the wireless communication system of the Corova Beach Volunteer Fire Department, and then also improve the wireless power line service in that area. We pushed it to the western side of the property, as far away from the ocean as possible, the least usable portion of that property, to keep it as far away from the beach area as possible.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Mahia?
I do. One of the things that we put forward was the idea of camouflaging the tower, and I know that our head of our airport has said that it may be an issue. I would ask Commissioner Beaumont, have you, and yourself, have you ever painted any of these towers, just to make them look a little more aesthetically pleasing?
We have, and we're open to your thoughts. I mean, our view is that the gray of the tower blends in better with the sky, or it sort of has a gray sky. But it's not a big deal. We're open to whatever.
It's always blue skies and always.
Well, there wasn't one today.
But Commissioner Beaumont is actually an aviator, and I would like to get your thoughts on that.
At 150 feet, until there's a helipad on that lot, I don't see where camouflaging it is going to be an impact to aviation. So I'd be more, you know, if it becomes something that the community wants, I think the benefits of, you know, the community versus, I don't see it impacting aviation at this stage.
Right. And my thought process was, when we originally went through this language to allow this tower, was just to make it more aesthetically pleasing. And after seeing the one in Corova, I kind of would not say that galvanized steel is, you know, where our water towers, for instance, are painted a nice light blue. So something along those lines is what my thought process was. And I wanted to ask you guys, while you're up here, if you're amenable to doing that.
It's still going to look like a pig.
Right.
Right?
It'll just be a pig with a little bit of white-blue lipstick on it.
One of the questions I had is, I think going back a year and a half, there was a HF or a RF spectrum analysis done in the county throughout, and one of the gaps that was noted was, in fact, in that area. So at 150 feet, that I would believe would take care of the rest of Corova. Is that going to have reach back to the mainland, like Knott's Island, at all?
I think, well, our thought is, Corova, I mean, the tower Corova and this tower will cover that area between the end of Bay Road and Corova. The county already has a cell.
We do not own one at Knott's Island. We rent one. And there are still some issues. I'm just curious, from an attenuation impact, if that will help us?
We haven't done a detailed study, so I don't understand.
Okay.
So long, even if the county wants to put a ton of its tower, you're open to that as well. Somehow it's sort of better than the tower that's at Knott's Island. I've been by that tower, it's probably better to put it in.
Yeah, it's, yep.
And so.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's all I had.
Okay. In these situations, would you guys have more than one cellular provider on the tower? Or how does it work? Just for curiosity's sake, for me, not being in the business?
Sure. At Corova, there's currently Verizon and, you know, both using, different heights, of course, on the tower.
Right, sure.
So their coverages are different, because there are different heights, and they have different technologies, different equipment, et cetera, et cetera. But both of them are using that tower.
So is it fair to say it's kind of based on who has interest in leasing space on the tower, is that generally?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Commercial fire suppliers.
Right. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, there was one other thing I wanted to add. One of the comments, when we talk communication typically with Ms. Noons, one of the challenges has been in Corova, I'm actually looking past you, and this would address some of those gaps in coverage, correct?
Yeah.
So this has been a topic in the FEAB with emergency comms. So in fact, this would fill that gap.
And I am going to call Mr. Laffner up to give some idea of what issues are.
Trying to get out tonight. Right, right. Okay. All right.
And let me ask him, if I may, Mr. Chairman, one more question. The conditions that staff has proposed, do you have any issues with any of the conditions?
No, I think they're reasonable, and we have no objection.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please continue. Thank you.
The last person I'd like to call, Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Jay Laffner. Jay, if you could tell them your name and what you do and where you live.
Chief Jay Laffner, 2181 Pike Road, Crowva Beach.
Can you explain to them the public safety issues that y'all see in the vicinity of where the new tower is going, and where, and how this tower would hopefully improve your communications and public safety?
Sure. Real quick, Crowva Beach has their own radio frequency, VHF, along with using the county's 800 megahertz. As we all know, the 800 megahertz radios are quite pricey. So we're still able to keep our VHF radios and communicate amongst ourselves as we go on calls. We do have our one repeater in Corova. We have since moved it onto the tower, since the tower in Corova has been built, improved our coverage greatly up there. Now it's less staticky, and we can actually hear each other up there. Now that we're building this tower, and trying to get this tower built in Swan Beach, we will be able to communicate as well there. Without this, we only have a few 800 radios that are in trucks and a few handholds, where we have a bunch of other people without radio communication. And with the cell companies going on, that will allow central to GPS locate, instead of we have a cellphone. instead of we have a cellphone caller on the beach with whatever emergency or a vehicle stranded in a puddle, that the car's sinking somewhere around milepost fifteen.
All right.
They will now have another cellphone tower to track it and give us something within feet instead of three-quarters of a mile.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do not. Nope. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that's all I have, as much as evidence. I'd ask that the agenda packet materials all be admitted into evidence and made a part of the record. If there's any public comment, I'd like just a brief second to put it together afterwards. But other than that, I don't have anything for you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move on to public comment. Mr. Gallup was actually the only one signed up, and I don't have anyone else sign up. If there's anyone else that would like to speak to this agenda, I'm assuming you've got what you needed out of us, Mr. Gallup, at this point, except for a follow-up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Angie Gregory, and I live at fifteen fifty-one Sandpiper Road, which is right in the area of the tower. It's two houses, two lots down from there. And I, well, I'd like to just prove, provide some arguments for why my neighbor's use permit for the communication tower should not be approved. And I'm voicing the opinion of several adjacent property owners.
In this instance, you cannot. You can only talk about.
Me. Okay. Well, that's fine. Okay. The project hasn't been designed in a way that preserves existing quality of life for the nearby residents. In other words, it knows to greatly outnumber the yeses. A hundred and fifty-foot steel tower would be incompatible with the natural landscape of the rolling dunes and maritime forests and marshy grasslands. There are a number of sensitive environmental features located on the site or sufficiently nearby to be within the zone of potential project impact. That includes wetlands, steep slopes, highly erodible soils, important wildlife habitat, rare or threatened endangered species habitat, mainly nesting plovers, and forest. The project plans do not accurately depict these features or include preservation plans. The plans do not show the road layout, which would be least harmful to each feature. And any of these points should be a flag, the need for detailed analysis. Vacation rental homes and a tourist recreational community exists in the project impact zone. And the project design will have disproportionate environmental consequences for this community. It's clearly a violation of the group's, but, all right, it's clearly a violation of the group's environmental justice rights. The impact study by Kirkland Appraisals LLC is misleading. The summer vacation rentals make up ninety percent of the community. Otherwise, a few hunters, fishermen, and horse tours are in endeavors that are considered agricultural products. Ecology-conscious homeowners making creative use of an image of recreation and leisure will find it hard to promote relaxation and enjoyment on the beach to tourists who are keeping a sharp eye on the vacation rental market. The bare necessities of survival suggested by a hundred and fifty-foot rusty metal cell tower in the heart of the community will keep away customers. Its presence on the horizon will also be a constant reminder that property owners and residents are being left out of meaningful involvement with respect to development and are being unfairly discriminated against because of differences in philosophy. It will create light trespass pollution. It is likely that nearby residents will suffer glare from lights or loss of a night sky view. And no, no one wants to live with an imposing ugly silhouette at sunset. The project likely have an adverse effect on the value of nearby homes. The project will not result in an improvement of the views along a scenic beach road. According to the visitor's guide, Corova's undisturbed shoreline has some of the best nature photography in the Outer Banks. Access to the site is by unpaved roads with highly erodible sandy soils and steep slopes, which will be made unsafe with the project's increased traffic, especially trucks to the site. The project is in an area served by a single sand road. The road will not be adequate to allow turning nor evacuation during an emergency. If the project involves a new road into the area of low-density development, plans do not consider the feasibility of maintaining the road in the future and have not given residents any assurance. The proposed north easement access to the site collects three to four feet of standing water during rainfall, and the pond stays for weeks, and it's a large pond. Wind and shifting sand constantly creates new dunes that block alternate access roads. Some ramps receive repeated storm surge and become completely inaccessible during high winds. For example, the only way into Seagull Lane is Sandfiddler Road, which is seeing erosion at an alarming rate and is likely to be gone very soon. The plans do not show that the project will not intrude on the property owned by others or easements. Yes, there are limited services in Corova, and that's a factor negatively affecting property value. But this project will not increase the value of nearby tenants by mitigating this existing factor. Unless support services and driving conditions improve, the project will not improve the public protection classification of the local fire department. A fire department spokesman has admitted that the primary purpose of the tower is for profit from the sale of cell phones. A typical cell phone has enough power to reach or call a cell tower at forty-five miles away. The base station and lower tower presently in use at Corolla Fire Station and a perspective clear the tower would only be four miles apart. The distance from base station to a functioning cell tower in Corolla is sixty miles. Cell service is adequate in the area. Typically, responders arrive very quickly to a house and then for a nine-one call. Now then, when they do arrive, if you have injured, they have to be switched from the four-wheel-drive ambulance to an ambulance on the main road.
I'm gonna stop you there. One of the things that, you have to present evidence, not hearsay.
Well, this is what happened to me. That's evidence.
So, but you're not speaking to a cell tower. You're speaking to an action beyond that. So I'm just gonna, just remind you to keep your comments about this tower and how it affects you or not. And really, most of what you said is actually not admissible, because it's not, it's not evidence. It's not proffered by someone who is an expert, such as a land appraiser, who cited numerous things to say that he is actually an expert and has done that.
Well, all I can do is that, is I live there, and I can tell you what I see.
I actually live a couple miles down from you in seventeen.
Yeah, so then you know what the conditions of the roads are.
Yeah, my cellphone doesn't work.
Your cellphone doesn't work?
Mm-mm. It's spotty at best.
Oh, mine works just fine.
Well, but at any point, I just, please limit it to what you're talking about with the specific tower and how it may affect you, and keep it in that realm at all places.
Okay, yeah. I really don't have much else to say. And, you know, like I said, to prevent undue impact to the community, the fire department should look to alternative to the tower. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming up. Appreciate it.
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, we would have, just briefly for the record, would object to Ms. Gregory's non-expert testimony on expert matters, as you noted already. Otherwise, I think that the agenda material show that we met the standards. The testimony tonight shows that we meet the standards. We're okay with the conditions proposed by the staff. And we would ask that you vote for approval of the use permit with the findings of fact that the staff have laid out in the staff report, along with the conditions that the staff has laid out in their staff report. And we thank the staff for working with me and my naivety and helping me through this process. And thank you for considering our.
I did have one other follow-up question for your appraiser.
Yes, sir. Mr. Kirkland?
Actually, it may be a couple, more than just one. So what, describe for me your portfolio of what you do appraisal work for. I mean, are you just a cellphone guy?
No, I'm actually, I'm a general appraiser. I appraise a little bit of everything. But eastern North Carolina, I'm doing a lot of agricultural products. I'm looking at farms. I'm looking at subdivisions. I'm looking at poultry farms. I'm doing a wide array like that.
Okay, so your primary business focus is not necessarily on cellphone towers?
No, sir.
That's it.
Anything further from the board? Okay. Anything further, sir?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I will close public comment. And does the board have any discussion at this point?
Yes, sir.
Just one note from staff. You've talked about the painting of the tower. If that's a condition that the board wants to see, it needs to be added in.
Got it. Thank you.
And I would suggest that Commissioner White be the one to pick the color if that's in fact.
Water Tower Blue. Kirtuk Water Tower Blue. How's that? The staff will have to get that paint coat, too. All right. Well, at this time, then, I'm gonna make a motion to approve PB nineteen dash twenty-three, Crowe Beach VFD Tower Use Permit with Staff Recommendations because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the Use Permit Review Standards of the UDO. The conditions of approval, and I'm gonna ask you guys to bear with me, because I gotta reread everything that Ms. Turner did. Number one, the applicant complies with all applicable review standards of the UDO, providing the following outstanding items are addressed. A, that a site plan approval is required by TRC upon adoption of the use permit. B, heritage tree mitigation plans shall be submitted and approved through site plan review process. C, an exterior light plan shall be provided and approved for any ground-based lighting. Number two, the conditions of approval necessary to ensure compliance with the review standards of the UDO and to prevent or minimize adverse effects on the development application on surrounding lands include: A, the tower shall be owned by Crowe Beach Fire Department and Rescue Squad, Inc., and used in part for public safety or emergency communication purposes. Crowe Beach Volunteer Fire Department shall have space on the tower for telecommunications equipment. B, before obtaining a building permit, the applicant shall submit to the county engineer engineer drawings for the tower sealed by a registered engineer. That includes a statement that the tower will meet all applicable local, state, and federal building codes and structural standards. C, every two years after construction of the tower, the owner shall submit to the planning director a statement of the tower's structural soundness that is signed and sealed by an engineer. Every six-year, the statement shall be signed and sealed by an independent registered and licensed engineer. D, if lighting is required by the FAA, it shall comply with FAA standards. Unless required by the FAA, strobe lights shall not be used for nighttime lighting, and lighting shall be oriented so that it is not to project directly onto surrounding properties to the maximum extent practicable. If construction of a helicopter landing pad is proposed in the future, the tower shall be reevaluated by the FAA for lighting requirements, and if required, the minimal lighting shall be provided. The applicant shall provide legal access for county employees to inspect the site during construction thereafter to ensure compliance with the use permit conditions. F, the exterior appearance of ground-based accessory structures shall be designed to look like a residential structure type of the district. G, install a eight-foot-tall opaque wooden security fence to screen leased area of buildings and equipment. And lastly, the other condition, the tower, in this case, maybe not camouflage is the best word, but will be painted in a blue to match our water towers and incorporate it into the architectural design structure and other means to the maximum extent practicable. Use Permit Review Standards. One, the use will not endanger the public health or safety. The tower will be owned by Crowe Beach Fire Department, and will have emergency communications equipment located upon it that will assist the VFD and possibly other rescue assets in providing services to the area of the county in the vicinity of the tower. Cellular service providers who may collocate upon the tower will be able to provide enhanced phone service during nine-one-one and emergency services to users who now have limited access to cellular and data services in the area. The use will not endanger the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. Per the impact study performed by Richard Kirkland, the tower will not damage the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. Item three, the use will not be, will be, excuse me, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. The two thousand and six land use plan classifies this site as limited service within the Corova subarea. The proposed use is in keeping with the policies of the plan, including policy OB-1. Kirtuk County supports the provision of infrastructure, e.g. potable water and services, adequate to meet basic quality of life and public health and safety requirements for the residents of the Outer Banks. Policy CA seven, the county shall continue to monitor the placement of communication and other towers in Kirtuk County and shall take action as may be deemed necessary to regulate their design and construction. Four, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. The proposed use will not exceed county's ability to provide these public facilities. The use may increase the abilities of the county and Crowe Beach VFD to provide fire and rescue services.
I second that vision.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question. I'd like to ask the attorney real quick.
Sure.
If I may. Conditions of approval two, E, we had discussed here that they're gonna use an existing permanent easement. Should we include that in there, legal access by the use of an existing permanent easement? Or will that suffice with existing language for that, use of that permanent easement?
I think the language in two E is sufficient.
To cover that?
In particular, what the county's concern would be is, as stated in that condition, that county employees be able to access it for inspection during construction and for any follow-up to determine compliance with the use permit.
Okay, so that area they're gonna use that, we covered that in it then? Okay, that's all I was concerned about. Okay.
Understood. Mr. Beaumont, at second. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries you down, Mr. Chair. Thank you all. All right. Next agenda item. Let me take a second to let everybody clear out. All right, next agenda item is PB eighteen dash twenty-three, the false tract phases one, two, three, four, five. Request for preliminary plat use permit for three hundred and one lot planned subdivision development on two hundred and twenty-eight point eight-three acres located off Kirtuk Highway, tax MAC fifteen, parcel eighty-six in the Mayock Township. And I will need anyone participating in this to come forward and be sworn in, please. All right. Need some left hands on the bobbles and right in the air. All right. Do you all saw, I swear to tell the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. After Mr. Tammy gets situated, we'll let her fire away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll remember hearing the false tract for their conditional rezoning as recently as November for an amended conditional rezoning. And just to orient the board, I'm sorry, I thought you were looking at me. Just to reorient the board, the false tract is located north of ranchland, this is ranchland, and south of Eagle Creek. And we can look at the rezoning and see that it is zone PDR, which is Plan Development Residential. And you can see that the land use plan classification is full service. The Mayock Small Area Plan Classification is limited service. Now, I know this is very tiny, so hopefully you could see it a little better in your packets. Just to remind the board, the overall approval for the development is for three hundred and fifty-three single-family units, one hundred and twenty-six multifamily units, and twenty-two thousand square feet of commercial. And what they are asking for tonight is phases one through five. And if you can, if you could squint and see those phase lines, that's what I'll go into a little more detail on the next slide. The applicant, again, is requesting phases one through five, and this is preliminary plat use permit approval. Phase one would contain forty-six single-family dwelling units, twenty-five multifamily dwelling units, with a total of seventy-one dwelling units. And I'll mention that there's no commercial development proposed with these five phases. Phase two would have nineteen single-family, forty-six multifamily, and sixty-five total dwelling units. Phase three is sixteen single-family, thirty-nine multifamily, with a total of fifty-five dwelling units. Phase four is twenty-seven. Phase four is 27 single-family, 46 multifamily, for a total of 73 dwelling units. And phase five is proposing 37 multifamily dwelling units. The other column that I'll call your attention to is the projected recording date, and this is proposed by the applicant. So if the board wishes to consider or adjust as necessary, it would need to be incorporated into your motion. But in this year, they would expect to record 71 units, and 2021, it would be 120 units, and 2022 would be 110 units. Now, the projected recording date is important because it takes us into our next topic of discussion, which is school capacity. The Board of Education did revise where these elementary students would be attending school. It was originally Moyoc Elementary, but in December, they did change that to Charlboro Elementary. The total student count for the whole project, not just phases one through five, is 119 elementary school students, and that's based on the generation rate from the Tischler study. Phases one through five is projected to generate 75 elementary school students. And the superintendent did confirm that Charlboro Elementary can support those 75 additional elementary school children. And when we get down into our chart, oops, sorry. Today's actual capacity at Charlboro Elementary is right at, I should say, October of last year, the attendance was right at 86 percent. And the reason you see this 21, 22 called out separately is because the Department of Education is lowering the student count allowed in a classroom for the 21, 22 school year. And so you'll see that we'll be at 89 percent without the addition of FOST. And when we add the 75, sorry, I've got my cute little mouth here. When we add the 75 students expected to be generated for that elementary school to that 2021, 22, we're looking at about 101 percent of capacity for Charlboro Elementary School. Moyoc Elementary, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Moyoc Middle School, we're looking at since October, a 93 percent capacity. And the capacity would remain the same, but with the addition of the 24 kids expected to be generated at middle school, you would be looking at about a 97 percent capacity. So this is just to get Charlboro Elementary School on your radar, realizing that this is the phases one through five of this development, and adding those 75 additional kids to Charlboro. Let's see. The required drainage improvements from that conditional rezoning remain unchanged. As you will recall, there's some off-site improvements being made as well. I'm going to talk to you in the next slide about some outstanding items that need to be addressed, and once they're addressed, the plan will be consistent with the master plan and the terms and conditions document. The technical review committee recommended that the item be tabled until the following are adequately addressed. There's a reference in the application, and it's in your packet, if you choose to look at that, that the project is eligible for county sewer, which it is not, and it was not in either the original order or the amended order that the project would be eligible for county sewer, so we've asked for that to be removed. There's also a reference in the application about the allowance for a connection to a private system. That was in the original order, but that was removed in the amended order. There's a handful of lots that we can't determine if they're meeting the minimum lot width. Some of those are cul-de-sac lots, so we just need the lot widths called out. And the reason we're focusing on that now is because we recently had a subdivision come before you that thought that they were meeting the minimum lot width, and then when the lots were drawn out, they actually weren't, they had to go through an amended plan. And so we're trying to prohibit that from happening again. And the, I don't know if you can see it very well, but this is Roberta Loop, and it appears that they're, they call them cluster mailbox units, if you've heard that CBU term before. Where they would get their mail would be across FOST Avenue. And so we're asking for just that to be evaluated, to see if there may be a necessary crosswalk there or some way to provide a safe crossing so those folks can get to their mailbox unit. Your Kraytuck Transportation Plan, as well as your Connect Kraytuck Plan, require an eight-foot multi-use path along Keratok Highway. So that would be the entire length of the portion of the property line that's on Keratok Highway. Now, the applicant has proposed to bring out a connection here, which is fine, but they would also have to provide a connection that runs parallel with Keratok Highway. If they want to bring it into their development, they bring it in and then run it across this open space and then back out, they could do that. It would just need to be pedestrian easement in that location. Public Utilities Director expressed a concern for sewer lines in the backyard and for potentially heavy equipment having to travel across private property for maintenance and repair. The Water Department, let me get this, is, there's a loop right here, if you could see that Emily circle. While state rules allow for two-inch line, under the Water Department's experience, they don't have adequate pressure with a two-inch line, and that's often a complaint call that they get. So they are recommending a minimum four-inch line in that little loop, so that way the folks have adequate water pressure there. If the board chooses not to table this tonight, but chooses to approve, the technical review committee asks that those unaddressed items be addressed. And then staff will talk about the Use Permit Review Standards. The applicant will address one and two. Staff will address three and four. Number three, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan and other officially adopted plans. It's staff's finding that at its May 6, 2019 meeting, the BSE determined that the development was compatible with the land use plan, small area plan, and the surrounding neighborhoods because: A, the proposed conditions for the property will improve drainage problems on the property and with nearby ranchland subdivision if improvements can be made to drainage systems on off-site properties. And B, the PDR is compatible with existing Moyoc Township. Four, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. In speaking specifically to schools, since the school board did move the students to the Charlboro District, there are adequate public facilities in regards to schools, and the county is comfortable stating that the other public facilities that we provide are adequate. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Glave, I noticed that there were 27 items on their plaque that y'all had issues with, correct?
Twenty-seven?
With what?
With just planning comments, yes. There were over 50 comments altogether, but with a project this big, I don't know that that's necessarily alarming, but they have addressed most of the 50 comments that all the departments had. But yes, ma'am, you're correct.
At this time, you guys have not heard back from them on the TRC comments. They're going to address that before us this evening?
Hopefully so, yes.
Okay.
The responses that we've heard regarding lot width, they were resistant to show those, and then removing the two items, they did not want to remove, the eligibility for sewer and connecting to other private sewer.
Okay.
Wouldn't it make your job and our job a little easier if all these issues were addressed before they came before us?
Absolutely.
The one question, I don't know if they're going to address that or not, you mentioned on the utility sewer lines in the backyards?
Yes, sir.
Are they going to, is that something they're going to address tonight? Or what is actual concerns that the public utilities have with those? Just accessing and crushing them?
Now, at times, the county is, after a plant has been in operation for a number of years, the county's requested to come in and take over maintenance. And so the Public Utilities Director is saying before the county would even consider that, if it were ever asked, that the lines would have to be moved to the front yard because the lots are small when compared to a regular, single-family dwelling lot, and you would be driving across with equipment the smaller lots.
That's a good chunk of money to do that.
Any manner of obstructions in the way, as people put trees in and fences.
Fence in or swimming pool.
Right.
But at this time, the applicant is proposing their own package plant, and so this system would be to the applicant and the eventual homeowners association to manage.
Right. But you just want to prevent any future problems?
He just wanted to put it out there so that you were aware of how he was thinking about it, that lines in the backyard just were not as preferred.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that PB 18-23 be tabled until all these outstanding items have been adequately addressed.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? All right. We do not have a second, so the motion does not move further. All right, Ms. Glave, did you have anything further, or any further questions from Ms. Glave?
Can you flip back to the one where it said that the TRC, I guess is the TR.
Comments?
It answers itself, never mind.
Okay.
I just wanted to see that. It's a lot of good.
Question?
What is the issue of having flexibility by saying it could be connected to another private sewer system?
With the plan development, the sewer treatment has to be on the site that it's being served by or be connected to the county system. So it could not necessarily connect to another private system. Like if there was a regional private system, say, or an adjoining system somewhere else that they would want to connect to.
That was basically my question.
Was that a problem? Is that clear?
It creates a conflict with the UDO because the UDO specifically states that you're serviced by your own wastewater treatment plant, if not serviced by the county's system.
So I'm going to go out on a limb and guess that the next project they have coming through, which is the adjacent property, that they would have an interest in combining those two into one centralized sewer system.
I'd leave that up to the applicant. We had a pre-application conference, and it had its own separate plant.
It does?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
The only reason I raised it is it seems like UDO is promoting multiple package treatment plants, nothing better than highway.
I think originally, one of the purposes, or one of the ideas of a plan development would be where you have the most services to offer, and one of those would be the county treatment plant. I think our regulations could use a little updating there, tweaking there.
How about if it was, I think it was 20, I wrote it down, 22,000 square foot of commercial. I mean, would that classify as the, I mean, we would want, would that be eligible for 22,000? I know we're talking about phases one through five, the 22,000 square foot of commercial. Would that be eligible? Is that maybe why that language is put in there? I'm just asking that question for.
That would be required to connect to their private system as well.
That's out. Thank you.
Anything further from the board? All right, thank you. At this time, I will ask the applicant to come up and present their case. Which book for?
PowerPoint.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Jamie Schwedler with Parker Poe at 301 Fayetteville Street here on behalf of the applicant. You've heard a lot about the FOST tract in the last year or so, and I won't belabor much of the details, but I will note that we appreciate the staff's comments tonight. We will provide some brief evidence from experts on the four points that your code requires tonight. And that's important because this decision tonight is unlike the rezonings that you heard last year in May and in November, and it requires a different standard. And what our North Carolina courts say is that we're required to show those four standards by competent material and substantial evidence, and your staff has taken the laboring oar on the latter two factors. But if we're able to show those factors by competent material and substantial evidence, then the applicant is entitled to the grant of the special use permit. That's been in place for some time, almost 40 years from the North Carolina Supreme Court, and that has been echoed through. And so while we hear generalized concerns about growth and things like that in the Moyoc area that often come with rezonings and other decisions that this board has to make, your task tonight is to focus on the evidence before you, and we'll put before you several experts in their field to talk about each of those four points and make sure that it's crystal clear that we've met our burden. And if we do, and if those facts are not disputed by similar evidence, then this board, we request this board follow the North Carolina Supreme Court direction and grant the permit. To streamline the evidence tonight, we've prepared affidavits from each of the applicants. They'll come up and testify, and I'll hand those around, have a copy for the clerk and a copy for the county attorney. But they'll largely give live testimony about the substance of their affidavits. I've included some exhibits in the affidavits, just again, for ease of reference, so you're not skimming through the packet. And then, of course, we'll address the issues that Ms. Glave raised tonight. So with that, I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. Mark Bissell. Could you state your name and address for the board, please?
Mark Bissell. My address is Croatan Highway in Kitty Hawk, North Carolina.
Mr. Bissell, have you prepared an affidavit for your testimony tonight?
I have.
Is that an affidavit?
That is.
Mr. Bissell, could you give the board an idea of your background?
Yes, I received my civil engineering degree from Duke University. I'm a licensed engineer in North Carolina. I have ever been practicing engineering in this area, particularly in Kurthuck County, for more than 35 years. I operate Bissell Professional Group, which is an engineering and surveying firm in Kitty Hawk.
And were you asked to be involved in the FOST project?
I was. I'm of the engineer of record.
Based on Mr. Bissell's experience and license in North Carolina, I'd like him to be tendered as a witness, an actual witness, and to lay out an engineering.
I'm going to need a few minutes to read this. I'm just, we'll accept him as an expert witness. Thank you.
Mr. Bissell, could you explain to the board your role in this project and the comments received throughout the process?
Sure. I've overseen the layout and the design of the master plan, and we have interacted with county staff throughout the process. We have addressed elements of the master planning process, through the preliminary plat, and Use Permit Review Process, and received a number of comments and feedback on the plans, and... And we received a number of comments and feedback on the plans, and I can go into some of these, some of these details. We received a memorandum from the staff. There were no under-addressed comments from soil and engineering, from DOT, from coastal management. There were no concerns raised by emergency management or enforcement, no unresolved stormwater issues, which you can see in Exhibit C. The building and fire inspections department commented about hydrant placement, fire truck access, and parking, and those comments were addressed. And there were concerns raised by DOT regarding the entrance configuration and whether, and the need for a traffic review. And as a result, we retained a VHB engineering to respond to those issues. Master plan was evaluated to respond to DOT comments. The district engineer, David Ots, confirmed that the entrance design satisfies the DOT concerns and that a TIA was not required.
Some of the staff here, just to clarify, or, did you receive comments from the TRC committee?
We did.
And are those attached to your affidavit, Exhibit C?
They are.
Did you respond to the comments?
We did.
Are those attached to your affidavit?
They are.
Could you point that up for the board?
Where are they at in the pack?
We responded on December 23rd of those comments.
And are those attached to Exhibit D, your affidavit?
Exhibit D, right.
And did you respond to each of the comments raised by the TRC?
We did respond to each comment.
Based on that review, is this project actively designed to handle the comments that were raised, projecting?
I believe it is.
And is the project actively designed to handle emergency services and related infrastructure?
Yes, I believe it is.
Could you speak to the board a little bit about your PRT Act ten in respect of the harmony of the project with this surrounding area?
Well, several elements of the project contribute to the overall safety and harmony. Designing commission, conditions commit to improvements along Roland Creek, for example, to alleviate existing drainage problems that have been experienced by ranchland and Eagle Creek and other residential properties. And I'd like to state that all of the commitments that we made at the, at the rezoning regarding drainage are being addressed at Phase One of this project, incorporated into those plans and will be instructed as part of the first phase of the development.
And have you seen all the offsite permission from the offsite area?
And we now have 100% of the, of the owners.
Well, good job.
And we included a 50-foot farm buffer to the west and a 90-foot open space buffer to the south. And the potential commercial component is located in chairs as the development in the way from existing residential neighbors. Maintain compatibility, and the community is designed to provide rockability, including sidewalks and multi-use paths.
Thank you, Mr. Bissell. Did you, you were here with Ms. Glave, testified about the superintendent statement about the intended zone being Shawboro for this area, correct?
Correct.
Did you receive the email that's attached to this TRC comments confirming that from Mr. Stefanic?
We did.
Mr. Bissell, you mentioned responses to the comments, and Ms. Glave identified several areas that were, they'd like to see more detail or responses. Can you explain to the board, go through those comments, and explain why some of those might be corporate at a later stage, and why some of them couldn't handle that?
Right. You know, I believe that these outstanding comments are extremely minor and easily addressed. Starting with the comments about offsite sewer. We stated that it's eligible because it's in a full service zone. We stated we're opening, open to connecting to an offsite sewer system, which is just a fact. And we also stated in the application that we are providing an onsite facility. You know, it's kind of like me saying that I'm eligible to get a raise, and I'm open to receiving one, but I may not actually get one.
Any other?
But, but we, but we have no objection to removing those two statements from the application. Basically, we say that we're open to the, to getting offsite sewer if it becomes available, and we're happy to strike that statement.
And they're committing to the?
And we're committing to, to the onsite system. The issue on minimum width setbacks, we have actually never shown lot width as measured at the setback, which is 20 feet from behind the right of way, but we have never actually shown that on a preliminary plat before, nor have we ever been asked to. Our professional land surveyor is certifying that these lots meet the minimum requirements. And we don't have a problem showing them on the lots that are listed in the comments if more than the surveyor certification is needed.
Sorry, Mark, did you just say that you don't typically show those?
We typically show the lot frontage, but not the lot width at the setback.
Okay.
Lot width at the setback is where UDO measures minimum, minimum lot width.
And if I may clarify, if the lot meets minimum lot width at the property line, they don't need to show the setback. But what we're having trouble seeing is a handful of lots that we can't tell if they meet it or not.
So you're really looking for clarification on those lots in particular?
Yes.
Okay.
And I can assure you that they meet the minimum width requirements, and, and we don't have a problem showing you that they do.
I would feel better if they showed them because a subdivision to the north thought that it met its minimum lot widths, and then when the plan was drawn out, some of them didn't. So they had to go through that whole amended plan process.
Ms. Glave, if I could just clarify the lot numbers you're referring to, is it in the staff report, lots 28, 29, 122, 123, 114, 113, 75, 73, and 191?
That's all we're asking for, yes.
We're happy to show it.
Okay. Thank you. And he's gonna, yep.
The comment on the corner lots as to the five-foot act, non-access buffer. The two lots that are mentioned actually don't have frontage on Quinn Street because they have an open space strip there, so the comment really doesn't apply. The comment regarding crosswalks, yes, crosswalks are intended at Roberta Loop, as they are on the other streets, and these can be added now and will be addressed at the construction drawing review. Yeah, it's incorporated as a condition. It's a matter of putting two new, two additional crosswalks on the planet somehow. And the, and we're gonna be doing construction drawings, which will, anyway. Regarding the H, regarding the multi-use path along Carrot State Highway, and Ms. Glave, you said that we actually should pull that into the site, so.
Absolutely, like if this required an easement.
And that's what we've shown.
Help me with that, Mark.
Pulled it away from, from the DOT right of way, because DOT and the traffic engineer had actually expressed concern about pedestrian safety right from the entrance.
Now, I see it here, but I don't see it this way. It would not.
Well, that's, it's, it doesn't really show up on that phasing sheet. It shows up on the other drawings.
Okay, so you would just need to provide a pedestrian easement across the open space. Okay.
A public multi-use path. We brought it in around the back of the pond, across the entrance, and then back after the highway.
So what, kind of come between?
Actually, it has been addressed.
Is it gonna kind of come between Lydia Street and the pond? Is that what your, what your intent is?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, gotcha.
And then it'll come back out to the highway?
And goes back out on the other side of the.
So that's fine. That'll be addressed with an easement.
All right.
As far as the sewer in the back, and I understand the concern, we've been told that we're not eligible for county sewer, but I, but I still, I'll explain. And, and this is not on all of the lots, this is on some of the lots, particularly the townhomes. And some of the single-family lots where there's a lot of congestion in the front yards. Sidewalks, streetlights, waterlines, other underground utilities. And there are certain places where there's a much better corridor for the sewer, and this is not an uncommon practice. It's done all over the country. And we just need to make adequate provisions for easements and for those to remain clear in the back. And this will be a publicly, a privately owned public utility company that will be owning and operating this facility, and they have plenty of experience in this.
So the lot owners are gonna basically be made aware that there's, there will be easements on the lot for access to those sewer lines?
There'll be easements in the backs of those lot lines.
Okay.
The backs of the lot lines and not through the, the lots, like, where, say they needed to get to one of these middle, clean out on one of these lots in the middle here, these smaller lots. So how would they access that? Would they have to come through a lot that would require some kind of easement, or?
They would, they would come around the back. It would really be no different than a clean out in the, in the front yard.
So they would come around the back by driving through a yard, or coming?
They're gonna have to, from the looks of it, I get where you're coming from, isn't it?
They would come up the back, the rear lot line.
Yeah.
From the adjacent street.
So you're gonna have to, this is just, just for me as a homeowner. If the homeowner comes in and wants to put a fence up, are you gonna, you're gonna have to keep an opening, I would assume, 10 feet wide between the rear property lines to? Okay.
It'll be, it'll be addressed in the covenant, absolutely. And as far as the, the water line, I've actually had a conversation since with the, with the water department, and they've indicated that the two-inch water line is probably sufficient. But, but it's typically something that's dealt with at the construction drawing stage after the, after the water modeling is, has been performed. Anyway, we've been advised that two inches is probably okay, but we'll finalize it at the construction.
So if staff comes back, if there's some further point, the modeling doesn't work, you're okay with it going?
We can do it.
Okay.
Based on this after you, Mr. Bissell, did you also receive comments from the NC DOT district engineer?
We did. We worked with DOT and received comments from David Ots, who's the district engineer for NC DOT District One on January 16th, indicating that NC DOT has no further concerns, and there's no basis to delay the approval.
And did you forward that email to the consultant team?
We did.
And was that mail provided to the county?
It was.
And I'm showing you what will mark as Bissell's exhibit app. Is this the email question?
Uh, yes, it is.
And is the exchange from Mr. Ots on page two of that email?
It is.
I'd like to pass the email to the board.
Okay.
Mr. Bissell, is Mr. Ots here in the room tonight?
He is.
And I'll let him testify or answer any questions, but based on this email and your understanding that DOT has not expressed further concern about the approval of the FOSS special use permit?
Correct. Well, I understand they're satisfied.
And based on everything you testified about here tonight, in your professional opinion, will the FOSS project endanger the public health of the city?
It will not.
And is the FOSS project, in your opinion, even forming the current county UDO in 2006, maybe?
Yes, it is.
I have no further questions to Mr. Bissell, but to the board?
Ms. Glave, did they adequately answer most of the staff concerns for you? DOT, did you guys get a chance to review that?
We did. We had a follow-up conversation with DOT, and
Okay.
what they're going to do is require a traffic impact study or analysis of survey road when floor comes forward.
Okay.
Because this project will connect into floor in several locations, and it's likely that people will go through floor to get to that stoplight.
Right. Okay.
Could I make one more comment here? We have proposed a, a phasing schedule for the recording of lots, essentially a phase every six months over the next two and a half years. Actually, the first one wouldn't happen until this coming October. But just, just for the record, you know, in my experience, once a phase of lots is recorded, the homes must still be built, receive COs, be sold, be occupied. And so it's not typical for all the homes to be delivered and occupied immediately after recording. In fact, oftentimes, we're not even occupied the same year, so that should be taken into consideration.
Might used to be true, but the way you guys are building up there.
So when we say, you know, 71 lots, that doesn't mean you're gonna have 71 homes that are occupied at, at first six months.
And so the steps following the recording include the construction of the home?
That's right.
And issuance of the stipend of occupancy?
Right.
And the sale of the home?
Right. Right. Is the board comfortable with the phasing schedules that they have suggested, or want to discuss that with Mr. Bissell while he's up here? Look like you got something on your mind, Commissioner Bellot. Tammy, can you put that school?
Phase one, how many schools?
Phase one, seven, oh, I'm sorry.
71 dwelling units?
71 dwelling units.
25.
17. That's what we need, is, we need the kid count on this, on this piece of paper, right?
Okay, so you're looking at 17 for Phase One. 16 for Phase Two. 13 for Phase Three. 18 for Phase Four. And nine for Phase Five.
And just to clarify, that's elementary school children?
Yes, sir. Elementary school students.
And then all these will be going to the shelter?
Yes.
Which will put them, those occupants again, once the stage is, they're gonna be pretty close to 89%?
When you add the capacity, when you add the FOSS numbers to the capacity for the 21, 22 school year for Shawboro Elementary, you're looking at 101% capacity. And Moyac Middle would be 97% capacity.
Was Shawboro and Jarvisburg's design for expandability, or were they only?
Shawboro's is maxed.
Shawboro's is maximum expansion?
Yeah.
Okay. Shawboro can be expanded. It was designed to build some wings. So instead of building a new school, we can expand off of that then?
Boy, you got. Just to clarify, you've got land, but the land is not great land, so we'd have to do a site analysis. The floor plan is designed to expand on, so I don't know if the side will actually absorb it.
Is Shawboro 44 acres, 45?
It's, that, that back is really, we'll need, we would need some engineering work. So.
Cheaper than a school?
But.
Well, that's my, my thinking. Does anybody know that it's 40 acres, I think, 40 tons?
All right, well, we're getting a little off topic.
But I would ask, can I ask just a question?
Of course.
Even though the recording date, and I think you alluded to it, is October 2020, it could be October 2021 before you see the first house completed.
it could be October 2021 before you see the first house completed in there.
It could be. Probably shouldn't have been that, but...
And we've got, I'm gonna defer to Lori on this one. We've got some houses that are being CO'd every 56 days. Is that the right number, Lori?
Yes.
So it just depends on the builder.
And if I could ask a clarification, Ms. Glave, when you gave the 101% actual capacity for the 2021, 2020 school year for Shawboro Elementary, was that right? And did that include all 75 elementary school children for all five phases?
Yes, that's the 75.
Right. And so I think what's important about that is that that assumes all 75 children would be arriving within two school years, and it doesn't exactly match up with what the phasing schedule that we have. And so, you know, I understand capacity, it's hard to calculate, but if you look at the phasing schedule, all 75, it wouldn't be in place in that sort of thing.
All right.
Any further questions to this witness?
No. Thank you, Ms. Bissell.
Mr. David Oats has taken the time out of his schedule to be here to answer questions, so I'd briefly like to call him. He can just testify about the email and if there's any questions.
Okay.
Good evening.
Could you state your name and your address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is David Oats, and my address is 309 Orchard Drive in Elizabeth City.
And what is your title and role?
I am the district engineer for the North Carolina Department of Transportation, District One.
And I'm gonna hand you what we've already marked as Bissell exhibit app. Do you recognize this email dated January 17, 2020?
Yes, ma'am.
And is this the email that you forwarded to the Curritah County Planning Department looking back to the FOSS special use permit?
Yes, it is.
At this point, do you have any outstanding concerns about the issues of the FOSS special use permit?
No, ma'am.
I'd like to tender Mr. Oats to the board if they have any questions.
Questions? Okay. Questions? Jordan Sweet?
I'd like to call our third witness, Mr. Lyle Overcash.
I'm gonna pause you just for a minute and call a brief recess.
Absolutely.
Get rid of some water. All right, we'll get everybody settled back down. We'll call this meeting back into order as soon as Mr. Belmont's done heating up our clerk to the board. Okay, perfect. Just wait.
I'd like to call Mr. Lyle Overcash.
Good evening. My name is Lyle Overcash. I'm managing director of VHB, 940 Main Campus Drive in Raleigh.
Mr. Overcash, could you give the board an overview of your background and education, please?
Yes, I've been working for VHB for about 19 years. I've been working as a transportation engineer for 27 years, graduated from NC State in 1993.
And do you have any license in California?
Licensed engineer in states of North Carolina and Virginia.
And how are you involved in the FOSS project?
Mark Bissell asked our firm to take a look at the driveway when they received some comments from the TRC.
And at this time, I'd like to tender Mr. Overcash, who's an expert in the field of traffic engineering and transportation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Overcash, did you prepare an affidavit in connection with your testimony tonight?
Yes, we did. We took a look at, since there were some comments made about accidents, we took a look at the accident history, last five years of the corridor, and in relation to where the driveway was proposed, and then also looked at the spacing between the driveway and the railroad tracks to the south and then intersections to the north.
And is this the affidavit that you prepared for this evening?
Yes, yes.
At this time, I'd like to hand this out to the board.
Okay.
I figured I'd be able to circulate it around. And then, Mr. Overcash, I'd like you to explain toward what the memorandum addressed in response to the staff comments.
We took a couple of different things. One, looked at, again, the driveway spacing. We looked at the necessary deceleration lanes that would be necessary for the driveway itself, so we recommended a southbound right turn lane with about 150 feet of storage. There exists a 2A left turn lane along northbound 168 now, so we recommended striping out about 200 feet of storage along 168. Interior to the site, we took a look at one of the interior intersections, recommended that they close that off and put a median through there, and that's where we're gonna propose to cross the multi-use path, and therefore we were able to form stored interior to site of about 250 feet and eliminate some conflicts as you entered the site. And those have been incorporated into the master plan.
Did you, you mentioned you reviewed crashes. Can you give the board a little bit of an idea of what you found in the crash study?
Yes, so we pulled five years of crash data from November 1, 2014, through October 31 of 2019, from about 500 feet south of Guinea Road to about 500 feet north of Survey Road, and that's about a mile and a half. During that period, we found about 37 crashes occurred, with about 16 rear-end crashes and nine fixed objects were the two predominant types. We didn't see any fadals or suspected serious injury crashes during that time period. When you compare that with other facilities statewide, the accident rate is actually a little bit lower than similar facilities. And then also, then we kind of zoomed in to where the, about 1,300 feet, maybe some of the project driveway, we had about 16 crashes, similar percentage of rear-end collisions predominantly, well, not predominantly, probably with more of a peak of rear ends on Saturdays during the peak holiday season, as you would expect.
And did you study the G crashes related to the railroad tracks?
Yeah, there was two during the period that we studied. One involved a northbound vehicle rear end, the truck that slowed. The other involved striking the crossing gate and then driving away, but we didn't see anything that would give us pause with the design of the rail crossing or where the driveway is proposed.
And you shared those observations with Mr. Oats?
Yes.
And in the course of your work, do you routinely work with the district engineer, Mr. Oats, and his support staff?
Yes, we're pre-qualified, and we have on calls with NC DOT in this division as well.
And would you say, fair to say based on your experience, do you have knowledge of the NC DOT requirements, both for design and safety of transportation facilities?
Yes, I'm project manager for statewide transportation, mobility, and safety on call.
And have you formed an opinion about any adequate transportation infrastructure to support the project?
Yes, and as proposed, the traffic would not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or neighborhood uses. So in my opinion, the project would not endanger the public health or safety.
Okay. And in your opinion, are there adequate transportation facilities in place and program to be in place to support the developed lots?
That's correct.
I have no further questions to this witness. To the board?
You're taking a minute to digest all this.
Sure.
Let me make sure I heard what you said. All of the, I think there's four recommendations that you have here. All of those are part of the FOSS plan now?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
And let me add that towards the end of the FOSS development, that we did notice that signalization would probably be warranted towards the end of the residential development. So that's something where you just kind of monitor it, depends on how many houses they built and how fast they come on to when that signal will be triggered.
Anything further from the board? Okay, thank you, sir.
I'd like to call Mr. Terrence Gerhart, please.
Mr. Gerhart, could you please state your name and address?
Terrence Gerhart, 3975 West Rutherford Road, Virginia Beach.
And, Mr. Gerhart, did you prepare an affidavit in connection with your testimony here?
I did.
Safe time, I'd like to distribute the affidavit, see if I can digest it while I qualify him. Is this the affidavit that you prepared?
It is.
Mr. Gerhart, while that's being distributed, can you please state your qualifications for the board in terms of your experience and any licenses you hold?
I have over 40 years' experience in the residential construction industry and the for-sales sector. I've been a builder developer, I've been a sales manager, and a consultant for the last five years. Specifically, I've run an independent research company called Residential Data Bank, and my primary focus is doing analysis for builders and developers of upcoming developments, the marketability of them, potential absorption price points, things of that nature. I'm also a licensed realtor in Virginia and have been doing consulting for over 20 years of those 40 years in the business.
In connection with that experience, have you had the opportunity to evaluate properties and how development might impact adjacent or abutting properties?
I have.
At this time, I'd like to tender Mr. Gerhart, an expert in the field of real estate appraisal and impacts.
Thank you. I'd like to qualify that. I'm not a licensed appraiser, but my research is based on market comparables, absorption rates, price points, and availability of jobs. So I just wanted to clarify that technical point.
Listen, McCrea.
I'll modify it to what I'm tendering at. I'd like to tender him as an expert in the impacts of property value based on his experience on running the data, the data company beneath us, I do, and based on his experience in housing.
Okay, thank you. Well said.
Thank you, Mr. McCrea.
Mr. McCrea, does that count, just as a matter of, would he qualify as an expert witness in this situation without credentials?
On the basis for which he is tendered, and what we give to you defines our facts in terms of whether his testimony drives the level of expertise or the purpose with which he intends to...
Okay.
We ultimately have to use...
All right. Or the appellate court.
There's always that.
Let's avoid that.
And just, and to be clear, certification as an appraiser is not required for this element, so that's why we're tendering this, based on his experience on the impact of property values based on listing them and looking at the absorption rates, things like that. In connection with your testimony tonight, Mr. Gerhart, have you performed any kind of impact analysis on the impact of the FOSS project on adjacent and growing properties?
I did. Primarily, what I was asked to look at was whether the development of this property would injure adjoining lanes and kind of the value that it was set in the corridor. It's my professional opinion that developing this property would not injure adjacent properties, and if anything, it would have a halo effect on values. And I make that statement based on several things. As already been stipulated, the stormwater, which is designed for this project by today's standards, will help alleviate some of the drainage problems on adjacent properties that were designed to stormwater standards that existed when equal creek and rainstand were developed. So these are much better stormwater standards. There's a buffer zone being provided, a visual buffer along the rainstand property that will assist, but most importantly, the project brings something to the corridor that's not been seen before, that we see a lot of, certainly in other areas, and that is an amenitized community that has some of the more popular things people are looking for today, which are a series of walking trails that interconnect, open space allows for spontaneous community gatherings, we have the village green, we have a lot of open space in the property, a proposed clubhouse and pool facility, a park. We do a lot of studies in master plan communities, and these are, for lack of a better term, the hot items that people are looking for in communities. So when I say there's a halo value to properties like this, is that they tend to raise values along the adjacent corridor because of the nature of what values do in these amenitized communities. The other thing I'd like to point out, I think was started by Mr. Bissell, was kind of the impact of these communities in terms of when they come online. And I was glad to see the optimism of thinking that would have everything in place by October 2020, but as you know, from this point, once the use permits approved, we go into plan design, and there's development, it's gonna take, you know, at minimum three to four, if not five, months, then we have to build model homes, which is a four to six month process in today's labor market, and at that point, you're open for sales and generating sales, which then you have to build the homes that are sold. So it's pretty optimistic to look at the numbers that are presented and think that that impact's gonna occur that quickly. The reality is, there's a lag at startup, and then you kind of play catch-up in years two and three, as the project fits the film. So I think it's safe to say that the things that are being proposed are gonna have a very positive impact on values along this corridor, and there are amenities that are proposed that are very much in demand by buyers today, so it should be a very attractive community.
Thank you. I'd like to follow on to two points you made. How does the inclusion of buffers on the FOSS property tend to protect against value decreases on adjacent?
I think it just exists. Things that are providing visual barriers from one community to another, I think it's just a positive impact on both communities of that matter. I think as importantly as some of the things I stated in terms of the nature of this community and the value it's gonna create, and then the halo effect it gives by rising values around the property, and we see that happen very commonly in master plan communities.
And the same question with respect to the drainage improvements that you heard about. We spoke a little bit about obtaining off-site drainage improvements that will be on the property of the FOSS that you did. What tendency would those improvements have on the values of these properties?
Well, it should only improve them. Can I leave the technical data of stormwater management to Mr. Bissell, but from my experience, again, as we see stormwater management regulations increase, developers meet those standards, use less beneficial effect, not only on the development, but on adjacent properties, because it helps mitigate flooding in those areas as well.
And do properties that experience drainage and flooding tend to value less than properties that don't have the drainage trouble?
Absolutely.
And are properties that are adequately buffered tend to go for higher value than properties that aren't adequately buffered?
I don't know if I make that correct connection, except to say there's certainly a benefit to buffering adjacent properties.
Do you have a question, Mr. Payman?
I did have a quick question. Number seven on page two. I'm just reading your affidavit and your statement here. Based on your degree in marketing and real estate, you state that the stormwater improvements will reduce the chance of stormwater... So you're basing that will reduce based on your education in stormwater?
No, sir. I'm relying on Mr. Bissell's testimony about stormwater...
Okay, I was just saying, we went through there, you said will, so you're guaranteeing per that statement that it will?
No, sir.
So that's not a correct statement?
Not a licensed engineer, that should be corrected.
Okay. Okay, I just, I was reading, and you saying it will reduce, you're guaranteeing about that statement that it'll reduce it.
Yes, sir.
So that's incorrect, okay.
Just to clarify, when this is tendered as an expert, they're allowed to rely on other evidence that's been admitted to them?
That's fine, but I just, if he'd reference that, right, that statement pretty much says that he is guaranteeing it'll reduce it based on the way it's worded in here.
And we're clarifying that is based on Mr. Bissell's testimony.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I just want a clarification, so what I'm reading here, okay.
What's on your mind, Mr. Belmont?
I'm still stuck with, it's going to improve the values, because this board has sat on multiple cases in the past, and like the case that appeared before us earlier this evening, Mr. Kirkland did a wonderful job providing the analysis and the metrics associated with, and those are cost valuation, or those are property value valuation tools that were presented to this board to establish the fact as an expert witness, and this board has gotten into trouble in my tenure as a commissioner by not zinging you or any of your past experience, but that exact testimony was used as a basis for overturning a case that this board heard, because that was not considered to be expert, that was not considered by the appellate court to rise to the level of expert opinion when it came to property valuation. I'm just suggesting... I'm just suggesting that I'm the cruel coach.
Commissioner McCray?
To the extent that he's going to testify to the value of adjacent property versus this particular project and the impact it's going to have, I mean, I would think you'd want to hear some type of statistical analysis, comparison of properties similarly situated.
Similar circumstances, similar, yeah, all of that. Anyway, again, I mean, there's an aspect of your opinion, you know, is your opinion, but I'm just cautioning this board that I've lived through this before, and it's not pleasant.
I appreciate that.
Did you poll comps and look at the surrounding area?
I'll give you some statistics that may help my comment in general, if I could. Just use some current data. I looked at sales prices in Eagle Creek over the last two years, and they were $299,986. Set communities appreciated nicely. The ranch lands over the last two years was $172,000. Let me put that in perspective when you look at new construction that's occurring today. The average sales price for closed new construction detached homes in Moyauk specifically in 2018 was $308,462. This year through 2019 year end was raised all the way to $348,996. That was a thirteen percent increase. What we're seeing is some different products being introduced into the market. We saw, as an example, countryside estates brought in by Palatama Homes right up the road, brought in a larger product, there was a market for it, the public responded very quickly. So as you see some of these things occurring, where development, the nature of some of the things being developed are changing, and we're going to see our first amenitized community here. I have ample evidence from my past research, and I'd be happy to do more if you care for me to do so, to where these kinds of communities do tend to increase in value. And I'm sure if I move back.
I'm sorry, I thought you were testifying that this subdivision was going to improve the property values, because that's one of the findings of fact that this board uses, is that that subdivision is going to improve the value of the property in the surrounding communities. I think I could categorically state that almost every house, I mean, I'm sure there's exceptions, but almost all property eventually will appreciate. That's a given.
Over time, yes, sir.
And so the point is, we're not asking will these houses sell, because, I mean, I think, and the ultimate client on this would absolutely testify that if you build it, they're coming. Okay, so, but, but again.
Well, Commissioner Bowman, I think, and number three, my analysis focuses on what the project will negatively impact the value of adjoining lands, although it would be in harmony in the area.
And that is the standard?
That's exactly.
Right. So what, he says it'll appreciate the property, that really isn't, to the, the bigger question is, is it going to negatively impact? I think that's something the board should keep in mind.
Okay, but, but the point is, he just testified that without this, all those properties have appreciated in the surrounding communities. All I'm saying, the only point I'm bringing out is to be consistent with what we've had to work with over the years, that from testifying as to the improved, is adverse or positively impact, that testimony, I think, is irrelevant. It's the same thing, is it going to adversely or positively impact the neighborhood surrounding it? It's the same thing. The same analytics are typically supposed to be presented to be considered expert opinion as to the valuation.
Mr. Bowman, if I could respond to that just briefly.
Sure.
There's no requirement under North Carolina law that it has to be an expert appraisal or an expert impact report, something that Mr. Kirkland provided, and I've worked with him in the past, showing the match pair analysis is one tool to do that. But the standard before you is whether there is expert testimony that this property will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and hold me in harmony in the area which it's located. You heard a little bit from Ms. Glave about the harmony aspect, I think, or the conformity aspect. And so there isn't a set standard that says it must be a certified appraisal, it must be an impact report, you must do the match pair analysis, those are typical things. But each case, and I think Mr. McCray will agree with me on this, is that each case stands on its own evidence, the evidence before you tonight. So whether you had a case before you that had different evidence, or it presented in a different manner, or was done six months ago, is not really the issue before the board. It's whether you have competent material, substantial evidence, in the form of an expert opinion to testify whether this property will injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands. And that's why the testimony about buffers and drainage.
I appreciate, and I appreciate that commentary. I'm cautioning the board that lesson learned, that's not a strong enough statement to be able to face in appellate court if challenged. I'm not saying throw him out, I'm just saying be careful by the expert opinion that was just proffered, because, and in, and, you know, in appellate ruling, that was not, that cannot be sometimes considered to be appropriate.
That's it. Have any, have you ever had any of your findings challenged in court?
No, sir.
Was Ms. Waidler's comments on point for pre-meet?
That's true, each case, of course, does stand on its own, and the evidence that is presented, I mean, again, the issue is whether you have determined that this witness is an expert and capable as an expert to testify as to the issue before you, which is whether this application will have a negative impact on the value of adjacent property.
Okay, and for him to be considered an expert, does he have to have any certifications or affidavits or anything like that, if we, if there's a preponderance of evidence, I guess, that he's put forward with his degree work and years of experience?
I think you want to certainly take into consideration his occupation, how many years he has been employed in that occupation, his educational background, any license or certification or training he may have received, all those types of things give you an indication as to whether someone indeed has the background, education, and experience that would lend them to be an expert in a given subject matter.
Okay, thank you.
Let me clarify, my affidavit stipulates that my finding is that it will not injure adjacent property. That was a tendency to give you some clarification, as to why I felt it could actually have a halo effect, but I just put those comments.
Okay.
Any questions?
Good question, you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call our final witness, and then I'll just reserve any time for rebuttal before I summarize the evidence before us, Mr. Jonathan Wells.
Mr. Jonathan Wells, please state your name and address of the board.
My name is Jonathan Wells. I reside at 1112 Court Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina.
And Mr. Wells, in connection with your testimony tonight, did you have the opportunity to bear an affidavit?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
And is this the affidavit you prepared?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
And you have a copy there, like you just asked the board? Mr. Wells, could you please give the board some background on your education and experience?
Sure. I am a certified planner with over forty years of experience in municipal and community planning, with a focus on public facilities and needs assessment. During my forty years, I also worked in, for fourteen years, for two different urban school districts on matters such as school enrollment projections, demographic forecasting, new school needs assessment, capital planning, new school site selection, and student assignment planning and implementation. I am a municipal planner with Enfocus Planning Incorporated out of Kannapolis, North Carolina, and the firm was engaged to perform an analysis of whether there are adequate public schools available to accommodate the students generated by this project per the county unified development ordinance.
Stop me there for a second. At this time, I'd like to tender Mr. Wells as an expert in school planning and capacity.
Any problems with, with him being an expert? Okay, thank you.
Just before we move on, I knew that Ms. Waidler has testified about this. We have Mr. Wells here, just to confirm what those statistics show and then answer any questions.
Okay.
Mr. Wells, could you just explain what your analysis included in this engagement?
Sure. In the course of my analysis, I reviewed the Kirtok County School Board Planning website, resource materials, I looked at the titular report, attendance data provided by the county planning department, and the December 12, 2019 TRC comment memo from the planning department, and various other correspondence provided by planning staff. I also reviewed the FOSS project's master plan for the application and the accompanying phasing schedule.
And based on those materials, did you repeat the email regarding the committed capacity for, or, excuse me, the capacity for the shop of elementary school students?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
And did you have any, anything to add in terms of elementary and middle and high school students?
Well, what I did was, I concluded that based on resources and my analysis, it's my expert opinion that there are adequate public schools available to accommodate this project sufficient to meet the requirements of the UDL.
Okay, and is that true not only for the elementary students, but also for the middle and high school students projected to be developed?
That's right.
Mr. Wells, we talked a little bit about the actual capacity. Are there tools that school boards can use at times to operate over a hundred percent capacity?
Yes, there are. My experience, schools are able to operate at in excess of their percentage, a hundred percent of their capacity, and a number of organizational and administrative things can be done to allow them to do that, such as reorganizing instructional space and using different types of scheduling, which can increase school carrying capacity. I've seen it up to, up to twenty percent above the numerical percentage for, for capacity. And that's without building additional classroom space.
So based on your review, is it your opinion that there are adequate public schools, adequate public facilities with respect to public schools for basis one through five of this project?
In my opinion, there are, yes.
And in fact, the one hundred and nineteen students come referred to you by the superintendent would have been for the entire project, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Any other questions for this witness?
Any questions from the board? All right, fine, thank you.
I don't know if anyone signed up to speak, my opposition.
We have a few people on here, I don't know whether they're for or against, but if you'd like to reserve some time for rebuttal afterwards, that's fine. All right, this time I'll open public comment, Terrence Gerhart. That was you, okay. Mark Bissell, you coming back up? No, okay. Looks like you got everybody here, and Jonathan Wells, so I think we've covered everybody at public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this item that has not signed up this evening? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment.
Could I summarize very quickly?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your patience tonight. I'd just like to summarize that we've met our burden under the North Carolina law to provide competent material and substantial evidence under the Humble Oil and Blair Investments case. And what that, what that case says in terms of Blair Investments is that when an applicant for a conditional use permit, or a special use permit in this case, produces competent material and substantial evidence of compliance, the applicant has made a prima facie case to showing of entitlement of a permit. And when they talk about competent material and substantial evidence, you're, the board is to look to the experience and education of the various expert witnesses. And what you had before you tonight were experts in their fields on each of the four elements. I appreciate the fact that the staff kind of provided the groundwork for elements three and four, that this plan is in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plan. Of course, that's a finding of this board from both of the rezonings ordinances that were approved, and that it would not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. You heard from the expert witness testimony of Mr. Wells, it also confirmed what Ms. Glave had said about the facilities being adequate, and it lines up with the testimony of Mr. Stefanik. Mr. Bissell also provided expert testimony with respect to the outstanding comments, and that there were none from fire, law enforcement, fire and rescue, and other county facilities or utilities. Mr. Bissell also testified as to the first aspect, and a little bit about the second, that the use permit will not endanger the public health or safety. Mr. Bissell testified that he went through the TRC review process, he received comments and responded, and then we went through a series of explanations as to how we would be willing to modify the plan and make those conditions of the approval tonight, and we can repeat those if necessary at the board's request during the motion. But his expert testimony and layout and response to Ms. Glave's comments, I believe, satisfied all of those outstanding issues, and we're happy to elaborate on that further. He also testified that with respect to public health and safety, that Mr. Overcash and consulting with Mr. Bissell and Mr. Ott, the district engineer, clearly an expert in his field, although he was centered as a fact witness here, testified that there were no concerns about the transportation, and that there were no outstanding concerns about public safety with respect to the NCDOT. And finally, the standard of not injuring the value of adjoining or abutting lands, that the project will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located. Ms. Glave talked a little bit about the harmony, when she talked about the consistency of this plan with the land use plan. This is in the area where the board has already found it consistent with the land use plan. It will improve the area based on the drainage, offsite drainage improvements, and those are all findings from this board based on the rezoning, and you can clearly take those into account. But you also heard from Mr. Bissell that due to these drainage improvements, that there will be increased drainage flow and management of areas that are already suffering. We have all of those offsite easements to conduct that offsite drainage, and those will all be done in phase one, in your phasing schedule. So based on that alone, I would, I would submit that those improvements would tend to not injure the value of adjoining properties. Ranchland is an adjoining property of the FOSS tract, and would bring more harmony into the area. And then finally, you have the expert testimony of Mr. Gerhart, who is a professional with, I believe, forty years of experience in looking at properties and determining how different aspects might increase or decrease the value of the property. And based on the buffers that are provided in this plan, the increased drainage that Mr. Bissell testified to, it was Mr. Gerhart's professional opinion that the FOSS project as proposed will not injure the value of the adjoining lands. And again, we know that those adjoining lands are the auto auction site, 168, and ranch land. The improvements here, in his professional opinion, based on his expertise and his experience, and I appreciate Mr. Bowman's comments, but I would submit that under North Carolina law, that there is a standard to prove this, and then there's flexibility within that standard about what evidence you use. And so based on the evidence before you tonight, it's competent, material, and substantial to prove this aspect, that the property will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands, and will be in harmony with the area in which it's served. And based on that, due to our instruction from the North Carolina Supreme Court, because we've made a prima facie case, and there's been no opposing evidence to the contrary, I believe we're entitled to the grant of the special use permit, and I'd just like to remind you that because there's been no opposing testimony, and we do have experts, the North Carolina Supreme Court says that if we've met our prima facie case, the only way that the permit could be denied is by offering that type of other contrary evidence. So some other expert testifying that there will be an injury in value, or some other evidence indicating that that, that standard is not true for some event. We don't, we simply don't have that before us tonight, and the board is not permitted under the law to rely on its own, you know, supposition or conjecture when that evidence is up the record. So it is competent, it is material, and it's substantial, we submit that, and we'd appreciate your vote in favor tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner McCord wanted to.
I just want to.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to confirm, you said the drainage signatures for the on-site and off-site, far as that y'all, I believe Mr. Bissell said, is that a hundred percent signatures?
That's my understanding.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any discussion from the board? Whoever will be making a motion tonight, I will make sure that you add any, anything such as a timeline that they proffered tonight, that it be included in your motion, just to make sure that we have all our faces covered.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote on this, I had a couple of people tell me, and I want to make sure it's not so, that Mr. McCord has a financial interest in this through his landscaping business, that he does a lot of work for the Oles, and he would be doing landscaping business. landscaping business. I was asked to bring that forward.
On this project, no. And far as have I done work for Mr. Old in the past, it's probably less than 2% of my business in 2019, which I've disclosed that, and my wife's not in the mortgage business, so there's definitely not a financial gain in, in that as well, so...
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay. All right, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move to approve PB 18-235, Phase 135, preliminary plant use permit, and staff recommendation because the applicant has demonstrated that the unused fees, the use permit review standards, according to UDO. Use permit standard worksheet, one, the use will not endanger the public health or safety, transportation, audible work, wasteland, as its stormwater management will be addressed in accordance with the following paragraphs. Transportation's domain subdivision entrance will be connected directly with NC 168, Currytoke Highway, not Curritoke. Deceleration and acceleration rate will be provided in accordance with NC DOT standards and will be approved by NC DOT prior to construction. Connectivity will be provided to the existing farm lane to the southeast, to our former auction site, and to the west. Roadways will be laid out generally as shown on the master plan and will be in accordance with the approved waterway and pavement, with character research using NC DOT complete streets planning guide, planning manual under guidance. Appropriate access has been made for emergency service vehicles in accordance with applicable standards, including the North Carolina Fire Code. Bottom of water. Water will be supplied by Project County being an existing 12-inch main located on Currytoke Highway, which will be tapped and looped through the south. Fire protection will be provided in accordance with the UDO standards and the applicable ISO standards. The water system will be modeled to demonstrate adequate flow and pressure for fighting fires on meeting the maximum day domestic demand. Waste water. Land has been set aside for the construction of a centralized wastewater treatment and disposal facility that will be constructed in accordance with NC DQ standards and approved by NC DQ. The wastewater collection system will be constructed by the developer and managed by a wastewater utility. Utility will be regulated by the North Carolina Utilities Commission and will apply for certificate of public necessity and convenience. Four, stormwater management. Major drainage plan known as Golden Creek Canal runs through the development property. Due to the importance of this drainage feature, not only to the development, but to other properties located both upstream and downstream of this property, the developer has committed to clearing and laying back the pipes and stabilizing a portion of Golden Creek that runs from the Eagle Creek subdivision to the railroad back to 168. The developer has also committed to improving the common property ditch, property line ditch along the ranchland and the auction property, and to activate a new ditch that would be available to ranchland along the common property line from the auction sites,
Got a lot of zeros reserved.
To the south and to power either, subject to obtaining right entry to other properties. The developer will also include sections of Golden Creek downstream and Fos property that require maintenance. On-site stormwater will be managed by constructing and series of stormwater management ponds that will be interconnected and will retain and slowly dis- stormwater to existing outlets. In addition to modeling and retaining stormwater through the UDO and stormwater manual standard of the difference between runoff from the 10-year developed condition and runoff from the two-year ready condition, stormwater will be modeled through 100-year storm without adversely impacting neighborhood properties. Implementation of this plan should include drainage for neighboring properties compared to existing conditions. Stormwater will convey to on-site retention ponds through a combination of cove, degross, stormwater pipes, and open vegetated soils. Two, the use will not injure the value of adjoining property or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located. Land used to the west is agricultural, with one dwelling located approximately 435 feet from the nearest property line, and approximately 565 feet from the nearest structure. Land used to the north across the railroad and Currytoke Highway is commercial, land to the east is farmland and residential lots, and land to the south is residential lots. Perimeter compatibility is being addressed as follows. One, to the west, a 50-foot farm buffer is being provided, followed by a 60-foot roadway corridor. So the nearest dwelling unit will be at least 565 feet from the existing residents on that farm. The vegetative buffer will also be, is also being provided along that property line. Two, to the north, Currytoke Highway, a farm is being provided along the highway, along with lakes flanking the main entrance road. The nearest dwelling unit will be set back at least 200 feet from the highway right away at the closest farm. The visual impact of the development will be minimized by setback farms and land stuff. Three, to the east, a 50-foot vegetative farm buffer is being provided along the existing farm land. Traditional single-family dwelling lots are being proposed in the areas that back up to the existing hydraulic limits in the adjacent ranchland subdivision. Even though the dwelling types are believed to be compatible, a minimum 50-foot buffer is being provided between the developments. To the south, compatible residential development, this is number four, is being proposed, and a minimum 90-foot open space buffer is shown to the property line. Five, limited commercial development proposed to be located interior to the development and will front along the landscape entrance full wall. Six, lot size ratios and density ratios are compatible to other developments that have been approved in the immediate area and other parts of Moayok. The applicant is not aware of any adverse impacts on land values in the surrounding area. The applicant anticipates that his proposed stormwater improvements may benefit the property values of, of the nearby ranchland communities. The development is anticipated to increase the values of nearby properties by improving existing drainage problems. Sales adjacent to non-agricultural activities, including the ranchland move of it to the south and southeast, and commercial and residential uses to the east. Sales also close proximity to the Eagle Creek neighborhood. The proposed use is compatible with these adjacent uses and furthers the county's goal of concentrating new residential development in the vicinity of existing residential development. Nearby communities, including existing planned communities, have 588 lots to the west, and 275 lots subdivision to the east, and 426 lots under development to the also Currytoke Highway, all in the vicinity of the Fos Tract. The development is appropriate for the location as it continues existing development patterns in this part of Moayok. Lot area ratios and density ratios are consistent with other developments that have been approved recently nearby and in other parts of Moayok. Three, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan and other officially adopted plans. At its May 6, 2019 meeting, the Board of County Commissioners determined that the development is compatible with the land use plan, the Moayok small area plan and the surrounding neighborhoods because, one, the proposed condition for the property will include drainage problems on the property with nearby ranchland subdivision, subdivision with improvements can be made to drainage system and on-site properties, and, two, the PBR is compatible with the existing Moayok Township subdivision. Four, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. Number one on the fourth, on December 11, 2019, the Board of Education revised its statement about SULGIP and determined that this development is entirely within the Shawbrook student agenda. Superintendent also advised that Shawbrook Elementary School has it passed for the 119 elementary students. This development is projected to generate, in phases 135, expected to generate 75 of those students, based on the July 9, 2004 Tishler State Student Generation Act. Two, the county can provide adequate facilities, including the monitoring to fire, emergency services, and law enforcement to service the development. And the last thing we need to do for you is that we accept the justice schedule, or phasing schedule as it was laid out in our package tonight.
Thank you. Did that cover your concerns? All right, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, I guess enough of them gone out, so we'll call the next agenda item, item C, PB 19-29, Kerthuck County, request for a use permit to expand the Moayok Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant located at 501 Winslow Road in the Moayok Township. And I don't need to swear on anybody, it's gonna be part of this process. All right, thank you. Oh, we got Ms. Lori. What about Eric? Did you get in on this action?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
I thought you were just hanging out there.
As you all saw, we swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you got.
I do.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Donaville, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you tonight is the county's request to obtain a use permit for the expansion of the Moayok wastewater treatment plant. This is an expansion of a major utility. A major utility is a use that typically is, involves infrastructure, and is, such as a wastewater treatment plant, and is designed to provide services to a regional area or a community. Just to give you a little bit of background before we start talking about the actual use permit, the county purchased this property, this 68-acre tract of land in 2010, and in 2012 constructed a 99,000 gallon per day wastewater treatment plant on the northern portion of the property. The ordinance in effect at that particular time did not require a use permit. It allowed for the wastewater treatment plant to be constructed as a use by right. And in 2013, the county adopted the Unified Development Ordinance, and that then required that all major utilities obtain a use permit. So that is the reason why the request is before you tonight. Have use of being made of the property, they need to expand the use, and that would require the use permit. And this expansion would provide additional capacity that would serve the proposed Currytoke Station development opportunities and commercial uses along Currytoke Highway. The site and the surrounding properties are all zoned agricultural. The property to the north is the Winslow Road and farmland. The property to the south is Moayok Run, a major drainage way and woodland. Property to the east is an existing and active mining operation and farmland. The property to the west is an existing and active mining operation and farmland. The UDO allows for major utilities in the agricultural zoning district with a use permit. The site itself is located about a mile off of Currytoke Highway, it's west of Currytoke Highway, and it is accessed by an existing gravel road that will be improved to meet minimum fire code standards. The site contains, as I mentioned, the existing 99,000 gallon per day plant located in the northern portion of the property, and the proposed expansion is shown on the southern edge. This expansion will consist of 200,000 gallon per day plant and disposal area. The site is actually large enough that it could handle additional demands for this property, and it's anticipated that this facility could handle somewhere in the neighborhood of about 800,000 to a million gallons per day on the 68-acre tract. A wetland delineation was completed for this property. They found about three acres of wetlands that are located predominantly along the Moayok Run and extends up into some of the farm ditches. A 30-foot riparian buffer will be proposed and maintained along those wetland boundaries. The only thing that it will exclude are those man-made ditches, which is allowed by ordinance. Looking in at the proposed expansion, the treatment will be an improved technology, and it will handle this high-strength wastewater that's being created by the commercial users of this facility. The improved process includes a membrane bioreactor filtration with biological pretreatment that's designed to treat this current stream. The design engineer and the applicant are here tonight and will provide testimony on the actual treatment of the facility. Screening is proposed along the perimeter. It's a farmland buffer that will screen this proposed, this proposed use from the adjacent properties that right now are pretty much uninhabited. The closest house is around, about, around 3,000 feet from this site. The proposed construction will consist of a single-story building that will also be constructed at the south end of this property. A community meeting was held on November the 25th, and four people attended, not counting county staff. Those concerns were around the buffer and the road and the maintenance for, that will be continued on that road. And the applicant has addressed that by providing the perimeter buffer and upgrading the road to meet fire code standards. The TRC has recommended adoption of this use permit, provided the site plan is approved by that group of individuals prior to any land disturbing activity and construction of the facility. The site plan is under review by the TRC, and they are addressing the comments now. With a use permit, the board is to look at the review standards and provide a finding that the applicant has demonstrated that this proposed use will meet the findings. There are four elements of, of the use permit review standards. One is that the use will not injure the public health or safety. The use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. That the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans, and that it will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. Typically, county staff is responsible for the last two, and the applicant addresses the first two. Looking at the land use plan, this property is identified as rural. And one thing to, to point out with this classification, during the planning process in 20, in 2019... And one thing to point out with this classification, during the planning process in 20, in 2006, there was an understanding that, I'll try to keep this short.
It's not your fault. It's been a long couple nights. That long weekend got to me.
I understand completely. The 2006 land use plan identified this as rural, and it's important to point out that there, that the county was looking at growth and development in this area. And through other planning efforts, small area plans and master planning efforts, this area became a targeted growth area. And the groundwork for the planning policies actually began with the 2006 land use plan. Those relevant policies include, and I won't read them all word for word, but I will paraphrase them. AG 3, it addresses the infrastructure concerns and regulations to serve and direct new development to this targeted growth area that we're referring to. WS 3, which the county endorses, utility extension policies that focus infrastructure to nearby targeted growth areas and provide a more efficient use of public services that are suited for the development. PP 3, which the demand is created by new growth and development that will be equitable in proportion by those creating the additional demand. ED 2, that capital expenditures shall be targeted towards areas that are most suited for development. And CW 1, and that's where the county may elect or incorporate adopted small area plans into this land use plan as needed, including consideration for county-led planning efforts that recognize changing demographic or economic and environmental conditions. Going on to the small area plan that was adopted in 2014, this area was shown predominantly as full service and very small area shown as conservation, which is basically where the Moayak Run is. It's important to point out that in that small area plan, it also targeted this area as an employment activity property. It also shows that policy IS 3 understands the significant influence that the placement of water and sewer services place on desired growth patterns. After the adoption of the small area plan, the county began efforts with the feasibility study that was approved in 2016 for that targeted employment activity area, and later in 2018 for the adoption of the Moayak Megasite Master Plan, which is now titled Currituck Station. Those are the boundaries shown as the Currituck Station area and the Megasite Master Plan. The last element that we need to address is the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities for this proposed use. With the additional wastewater facilities that are proposed for this next phase of land use demands for Currituck Station, it is believed that this will not increase or exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, services such as schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Question? Does it move back here to you?
Good evening, Chair, Board of Commission members, Mr. Psych, Leather and staff. My name is Joe Anloff with Anloff Engineering. I'm the lead engineer of the team of project engineers on this project. I had a few brief slides to explain the wastewater treatment process to you. This first slide, which I believe you can see, shows a picture of the biological nutrient removal vessel, which is a vessel that's segmented into different chambers that house different microbes that do different parts of the treatment process, with the end goal of removing the nutrients from that wastewater stream. And so if you can just catalog that picture in your mind, I'm not quite sure how to advance this slide to the next one.
Metaphonic.
Thank you. And so, thank you. That one right there? Okay, thank you very much. So, so not to repeat what Donna has already expressed to you, but the parcel in red is a 68-acre parcel. The green is the access road. This Winslow Road is a 45-foot access easement. And then the extension of the green down into the red is another half-mile of access road. So we have, to keep this in perspective, we have a mile-long road back to the site and then a half-mile down to the site, the new wastewater treatment plant, which is located on the southern portion of the site. That becomes important to understand as we build the road that accesses the site, that it is a mile and a half long of a 20-foot wide gravel road. There's a water main extension that's required, eight-inch water main that runs that entire length. And then for the half-mile from the northeast corner of the property down to the wastewater treatment plant is another extension of an eight-inch wastewater force main. So this project is not just the wastewater treatment plant, the 60-by-60 metal building and the disposal. It's a lot of other infrastructure that's necessary to move this project forward. So this is the site plan, and just to give you an idea of what these components are, the blue circle that's labeled BNR is the biological nutrient removal vessel. That's that round vessel that was on the first slide. The membrane skid, the membrane bioreactor is a small rectangle, and then the 60-by-60 metal building is shown in orange. So the project elements, as I mentioned before, there's, you're getting a 200,000 gallon per day wastewater treatment plant, which is a screen plant that receives and processes the wastewater at the headworks, the biological nutrient removal unit, and the membrane bioreactor. And a membrane bioreactor is, is a very fine filter, and it's so fine that it can remove pathogens like microbes and some viruses. So it is a polishing filter designed to protect the environment, the ecosystem where we discharge this treated wastewater and to protect the public health. You're also getting two active disposal basins and one repair basin. So you have two basins that are actively receiving treated effluent, and you'll have a third basin that'll act as a repair basin, so that when maintenance needs to occur on one of the active basins, the basin, the repair basin can be employed while one of the active basins can be taken offline. You have a mechanized groundwater lowering perimeter drain system. You have two active mines on either side of this project. They are artificially de-watering the groundwater table to a significant elevation, and so we're gonna mimic that same thing around these perimeter drains to control the groundwater table. As we apply treated effluent to the disposal basin, we need to counteract the mound that occurs in the groundwater table with a mechanized groundwater lowering perimeter drain system. You get a 60-by-60 metal building, which is complete with labs, offices and storage area. As I mentioned before, 1.5 miles of 20-foot wide gravel access road, eight-inch diameter water main, and half a mile of eight-inch diameter wastewater force main. The access road will address the extension of existing culvert pipes and the addition of new culvert pipes in the agricultural ditches to make sure that drainage of the agricultural properties adjacent to and where flow goes through the property that that is maintained. And there's also landscaping vegetative buffers and a chain-linked security fence. The treatment process, as I said before, the round unit is a biological nutrient removal vessel, and the picture that's on the right-hand side is the skid-mounted membrane unit, and on the bottom is a process schematic for this treatment process. And if you want, I can go into great detail about that, but you probably don't wanna know about that stuff.
Nope. Ben does, but we don't.
So.
Eric specifically requested a five.
Right, right, right.
After the meeting.
I'll get right up.
He's speaking.
He's sworn in, so he can. Then there's three disposal basins, which are long linear wet ponds. In the beginning, because of the mine operation, they will probably be in a dry condition, but they can also be operated as a wet pond, and they're long and linear so that the maintenance can occur by utilizing a long-reach excavator perched on the outside berm to perform the maintenance on the interior of the berm. There's a lot of permits required just to get the wastewater treatment plant. Starts with the North Carolina Natural Heritage Program, which assures the state that we are not jeopardizing any endangered or threatened aquatic species. Earlier tonight, a gentleman, a public comment, made a comment about being concerned about the ecosystem. That's one of the things we address, is are there any threatened species that this project would impact? We have a stream classification that occurs, a wetland delineation, as Donna had already stated, receiving stream analysis. We look at the Moayak Run and how this project impacts that waterway. There's a water main extension permit, DOT encroachment agreement for the access road, a stormwater permit, solar erosion sanitation control permit, a NPDES permit, a non-discharge permit for the high-rate infiltration disposal on the wastewater treatment plant, and the Dominion Energy Transmission Easement Crossing Approval. We have all of the permits for this project with the exception of the last two. We did receive review comments from the state at the end of last week. I've already processed and mailed back today a response to their request for additional information, which was complete with the exception of a supplemental model that has to be done at the disposal, which is done by one of my subconsultants, Mr. Ed Andrews. Dominion Energy Transmission Easement Crossing Approval is also, we're also waiting for that. That was submitted in July of 2019, and I followed up several times with them to get approval to put the access road and the force main through the transmission easement that is on that 68-acre parcel. We're still waiting for approval from Dominion. And the purpose and benefits, just in summary.
I'm gonna slow you down for just a second.
Yes, sir.
If we don't have those approvals, can we still do this project? It seems to me you would need those to move forward.
So the DEQ permit, the, and I'm gonna speak maybe out of turn, so anybody jump in here and correct me. There were pretty minor comments, no major comments.
Right.
More cleanup, so that's gone back to them. We'd expect that that permit will be issued pretty shortly. Dominion Energy, we haven't heard that they're opposed to it, but you're dealing with Dominion Energy, so we're, I mean, I can reach out to our government liaison and see if they can help move it. Don't anticipate an issue with that.
Right.
There's all kinds of infrastructure that cross there.
Seven months now?
I think the issue is that, I think it gets lost in their organization.
Right.
So, like I said, I'll reach out to our government liaison, Wendy, I can't remember her last name now, and see what she can do.
Okay.
It's a transmission group, which I believe is out of Richmond, Virginia.
Right.
And I normally hit them up with emails and ask them, there is, as Mr. Psych Leather said, there is no, nothing that we're proposing to do that's against what they typically allow in their transmission easement. It's the access road and the force main and the water main. Pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Is this system anything like the other Moayak?
They're different processes, but all.
It's very different.
It's a very different process.
We're not trying anything new and radical and.
No, they're memories.
Groundbreaking.
No.
Good.
This is a proven system. In fact, a similar system is in the local plant right now, and giving the effluent down to almost a permit limit, so no other local entity should ever divert it back to the locals.
Excellent. I like being cutting-edge, but not, never mind.
Not ever that age.
So to conclude, the purpose and benefits, of course, the wastewater treatment plant provides additional wastewater treatment disposal capacity. We have a focus on nutrient pathogen removal, protecting the environment, groundwater quality in the local ecosystem, and protecting public health.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll lead Mr. Born through his testimony, if I may.
Okay.
We'll go quickly, given the late hour.
Yes.
If you please state your name and how you're employed.
My name's Greg Born. I'm a real estate appraiser, and I was hired by the county to look at the impact, if any, of the expanded sewer plant will have on the surrounding property.
And how long have you been employed as a real estate appraiser?
I've been an appraiser for over 30 years.
And what is your educational background?
I have a business degree from Virginia Tech. I also, as far as certifications, I am a general certified North Carolina appraiser. That means in addition to doing residential appraisals, I can do industrial, commercial, and complex assignments like this. I also hold the MAI designation, which is basically, in addition to, it's a professional designation that goes beyond what I'm required to do for the state, so I have more education, more experience. Every period for my renewal of my MAI, I have to take a lot more course hours than I would for the state, so it's up and above and on top of what you're required to do for the state.
You mentioned the purpose for your engagement with the county. Approximately how many appraisals of the same type that you perform for the county have you conducted in your career?
Of the same type of looking at a sewer plant?
Yes.
No, this is my first first sewer plant.
With regard to use of property and zoning application, how many appraisals have you performed?
This would be the first that I'm testifying in this situation.
Have you been tendered as an expert in court proceedings?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Approximately how many?
Ooh, at least a dozen.
Okay. Would you please explain to the board the type of appraisal that you conducted and come into a conclusion as to whether the use of this property for this application would negatively affect value of adjacent property?
What I did is I looked and did match pairs analysis to see if a property located near a sewer plant has an adverse impact on its value relative to a property that's not located on a sewer plant. You look at sales of the two types of properties, close, not close, and to see if there's any difference.
Okay, and so then, going through that process here, what specifically did you do?
I looked at both rural and more high-density sewer plants located in more dense areas. I started, I looked at the town of Columbia Sewer Plant in Terrell County, the Crestwell Sewer Plant in Washington County, the Edenton Sewer Plant in Chawan County, the Sewer Plant for Elizabeth City, and also two sewer plants in Camden County. One's up near South Mills and the other one's around the Courthouse area. I also looked at more dense areas like the sewer plant for Kinnick Shores on Hatteras Island, the sewer plant for Manio on Roanoke Island. I looked at the sewer plant for Villages of Nags Head, Nags Head, the Kaililville Hills Wastewater Treatment Plant, and also the Monterey Shores Treatment Plant in Currituck.
And did you?
Quick question. So you're, you were looking at basically property values match pair on where there had not been a sewage plant and got one, or one that already had a sewage plant and expanded?
Exactly. What I was looking at, one that already has a sewer plant.
And expanded.
And not expanded. The one, the existing plant was already there, you had properties that were adjacent or nearby, compared it to properties that were further removed from the plant to see if being next to the plant has any impact on its value.
Okay, that part I understand. The difference is, we already have, so that'd be great, but we already have one, so.
Exactly. And I looked, and I looked in the Moayak area too, to see what you have there. Obviously, by expanding the plant, you already have a plant there. It's, you know, it's, which one half does the other, it's the same thing.
Okay, good.
Increasing the intensity of the plant, but nonetheless, it's still, it's a sewer plant. It's it.
So based upon your evaluation of those different plants and adjacent uses of property, what did you determine?
I determined that the expansion of the sewer plant will not have an adverse impact on any of the values of the adjacent properties and will be in harmony with the surrounding properties.
I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Mr. Beaumont, any further questions? Just witness.
No, but thank you, Mr. Chairman, for asking.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone else this evening?
I think Mr. Beaumont had a question.
She says, you had something for Donna?
Uh, yes.
Real quick, you don't even, why did, why did they add this? Why was this added to us in the UDO? Was there a thought process behind that?
Well, it's a major.
Right.
And it can have an impact on a particular area, a region, if, say if it wasn't the county's, but it was private, it can have an impact on how development could hurt a particular area. How could it?
Yeah, but we, anyway, let's do this offline, because, anyway.
Good. Just for the record, the county doesn't exempt itself from any requirements of the UDO, and so that's why we're going through the process.
One quick question I'll make. You just approved a false special use permit. Do they have to come get a special use permit for their plant? Do they have to come get a special use permit for their plant?
It's part of the plan.
If at some point they wanted to turn it into a true regional system, they would. That's the, correct.
How many acres is the, I know the total site is 80 acres?
Is it 86?
The 68.
Yes.
60, excuse me. And we're landscape buffering, and we're landscape buffering around, just not the
whole, the perimeter.
About the perimeter on one.
Which is roughly...
Both sides of the improvement.
Of the improvement area.
All right. Question recorded, you won't be getting that contract.
No, yeah, I wanted to, yeah. I wanted to disclose that I would not be bidding my company on that contract as well, so.
All right. Anything further for staff or the applicant? All right. I'll open public comment. I don't have anyone signed up, and anyone would like to speak of this. Seeing no one, I will close public comment and open floor for motion.
I move to approve PB 19-29, Currituck County Use Permit with Staff Recommendations and the TRC Conditions of Approval because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the Use Permit Review Standards of the UDO. TRC Conditions of Approval, one, the site plan approval is required by TRC prior to land distributing activities in construction of the facilities. The use will not, one, the use will not endanger the public health or safety. A, the proposed wastewater treatment expansion will include advanced treatment equipment designed to treat high-strength wastewater and perform nutrient removal. Nutrients targeted by this advanced treatment system include nitrogen and phosphorus, which are common components of fertilizers. The plant expansion will work to improve the environment before these constituents can be introduced into the local ecosystem. B, the plant expansion will include a new screen plant to process all the flow tributary to the facilities in Moyacan. The screen plant will work to mitigate the introduction of wastewater components that are proven to inhibit wastewater, the wastewater treatment process. The plant expansion also includes a biological treatment unit and a membrane bioreactor that will work to remove pathogens from the treated effluent stream and by doing so will work to protect the groundwater resource and public health. The facility will be surrounded by chain-linked fence and access by the public will be prohibited. The facility itself will be located in a remote corner of the parcel and will be shrouded by both natural occurring and planted landscaping plants. C, the proposed plant expansion will include improvements to the existing gravel access road that will enhance access to the vicinity and public safety. D, the proposed expansion will include the extension of potable water supply and fire suppression water, which will work to offer further protections to the public. E, the electric infrastructure will be extended as well to serve this plant. Two, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located. A, the existing public wastewater treatment plant was constructed in 2012. B, the 2013 UDO requires a use permit for a major utility, including but not limited to regional or community-wide wastewater treatment facilities. C, the property contains 68.03 acres and adjoins farmland to the north, the Moyacan Run to the south, farmland and mining to the east, and farmland and mining to the west. D, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers identified 3.2 acres of the site as wetlands that are subject to the Section 404 of the Clean Water Act. A 30-foot riparian buffer will be provided adjacent to the 404 wetlands excluding the man-made ditches and ponds. E, the proposed use is approximately one mile west of Kerituck Highway. F, the existing use of the property includes a public wastewater treatment facility that is permitted, designed, and constructed to treat 99,000 GPD of wastewater. G, the expansion of the existing wastewater treatment facility will treat 200,000 GPD of wastewater. It is estimated the use can be expanded to approximately 800,000 to 1 million GPD. H, currently, the closest residences or businesses are over 3,000 feet from the site. I, there is no data showing impacts to properties over 1,000 feet from wastewater facilities. J, wastewater plants that are properly screened and operated are not shown to have a negative impact to adjoining or abutting lands. K, vegetative screening is proposed to meet the UDO standards. Three, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. A, the following 2006 land use policy statements apply to the proposed request. I, or one, sorry, Policy AG 3, county actions concerning infrastructure and regulations shall serve to direct new development first to targeted growth areas near existing settlements identified as full-service areas on the future land use map rather than leapfrogging to locations in the midst of farmland and green space identified as rural and conservation areas on the future land use map. Two, Policy WS 3, Currituck County endorses utility extensions policies that focus water and ground sewer services, one, within existing developed areas and in nearby targeted growth areas identified as full-service and limited service areas. Two, where development densities would make the provision of all public services more efficient. Three, where land, where the land is particularly well-suited for development. And four, away from environmentally sensitive areas such as areas with extensive wetlands or the northern beaches of the Outer Banks. Three, Policy PP 3, the cost of infrastructure, facilities, and services related to the demand created by new growth and development shall be borne in equitable proportion by those creating the additional demand, so as to lessen the burden on the general taxpayer, and this approach may include a land transfer tax, impact fees on new development, upzoning fees, and user fees for new facilities. Four, Policy ED 2, capital expenditures for the purpose of economic development shall be targeted toward areas that are most suited for development. Targeted areas should include raw lands as well as the revitalization and reuse of currently unused or underutilized structures, sites, and infrastructure. Targeted areas primarily include those located within the full-service areas identified on the future land use map, and to the lesser extent, those include in the limited service area. Five, Policy CW 1, Currituck County may elect to amend or incorporate it, adopted small-area plans into the land use plan as needed. This includes consideration of citizen-initiated amendments or county-led planning efforts that recognize changing demographic, economic, or environmental conditions. B, the following Moyacan small-area plan policies apply to the proposed requests. One, the MSAP, supplements to the land use plan to more specifically address the needs and issues of the study area and establish a new focus for growth and development. Two, the Moyacan small-area plan adopted in 2014 identified this area as an employment area, activity area. Three, Policy IS 3, recognize that water and sewer services have significant influence on growth and require that consideration be given to the placement of proposed utilities in perspective to the desired growth patterns. C, the proposed request is consistent with the Moyacan mega-site master plan and Figure ES 1. D, the proposed request is consistent with the 2016 feasibility study that served as the guide for potential land use demands for the regional area known as the Moyacan mega-site, Currituck Station. Four, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. A, the use provides additional wastewater facilities for the next phase of the land use demands for Currituck Station. B, the use will not increase or exceed the county's ability to provide services to schools, fires, and fire and rescue, and law enforcement.
Thank you for reading that.
Mr. Chairman, before we give a second, we need to...
You're late.
Under the section, two, on the first page, A, the existing wastewater treatment plant was constructed in 2013, not 12. The property was purchased in 2012. Well, Ken, but the plant was not built until it started construction until 2013. It was not under construction when I was on the board previously.
When I was on the board in 2012, it was under construction. It was under construction and, oh, permits were issued.
Permits were, yeah, it might not have been under construction.
It was a January.
It was cold January.
Okay. You know.
Do we retract that statement then?
I'll put 12 last up. Doesn't matter. It's your motion.
I will amend to A to read, "The existing public wastewater treatment plant was constructed around 2012."
Okay, all right. All right. Mr. Chair. Any further discussion, sir? No. Aye. Thank you. All right, moving on. New business. Board appointments. The Moyacan Stormwater Service District, or Moyacan, been here too long, starting saying Moyacan. At this point, what is that?
There's a consensus one, so...
Who was it that worked? Let's see, I don't have it. Got to get to it.
Hold on, I'm here, I'm there. The...
Uh, water, yes.
Three applications have been discussed. Should it be more, all consensus?
I think...
I mean, the names, I mean, it's Cindy Arthur.
Do you resign?
Oh, replacement will be filled, whoops, okay. Yep, 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 okay, oh, okay. Reading wrong one then.
No, should we table that? Should we see the name?
Thank you. Go second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, moving on. Number two, Rec Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I have a nomination for Recreation Advisory Board. Mr. Robin Kane has served his two terms. I'd like to nominate Harold Walston to serve in his place as a replacement on the Recreation Advisory Board.
Thank you.
I'll second him.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. Item three, ABC Board. This would be for Mr. Commissioner, former Commissioner Vance Idlet, to reappoint him to a second term on the ABC Advisory Board.
And Ms...
What's that?
I'll move to reappoint Vance Idlet.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to make a few comments, if I could. I mean, just that, Mr. Idlet, since he's been on the ABC Board, he has shown up consistently to the meetings. Since he's been on the board, he's been instrumental in helping rewrite the personnel policies and restructuring the pay scale and benefits for the employees, which was well-needed with the ABC Board. He was part of a search committee that helped find a new accountant for the ABC Board, which has already shown savings, operational savings, which everyone knows the ABC Board is nonprofit, so any savings or any profits we made goes back to the county, the sheriff's department, and school system, so he's been instrumental with that. And he's also been instrumental with the design of the Corolla ABC, the new ABC store, and the existing board members enjoy working with them and they'd like to see him for a second term, so with that, I appreciate the nomination. Just wanted to give some background.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. Consent agenda, Mr. Cycleather, you have a change?
Yeah, so we'll need to pull the third item actually off of the consent agenda. We'll hear that at the next meeting because it needs to be part of a TDA agenda, which we didn't advertise for that.
Okay, so you need one of us to make a motion to...
To amend, to strike that from the...
Chairman, I move to strike item three, change order maritime museum from the consent agenda.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. At this point, I will recess the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners and open a special meeting of the Ocean Sands Sew and Water District. Mr. Cycleather, is it? Come on, man.
Faster, faster, faster.
What you have before you is a budget amendment to the Ocean Sands. Which one have we had here? Probably still candidates.
It's a budget amendment for appraisal services of open space. So we're taking, we have money in the contingency fund and we're going to move it to professional services.
This is chemicals and out capital outlay.
You didn't do my budget amendment.
Mr. Jarvis, would you like to present that item this evening?
No, I'm not aware of the chemicals. I apologize.
Mr. Jarvis is going to present that item this evening.
I'll defer to Mr. Cycleather.
This is a budget amendment to move funds from chemicals in the sewer plant.
Okay.
Long night, sorry.
Yeah, you're in a different meeting hall together.
You're good.
All right, move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion to close.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I'm going to move to go into closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.1186 to discuss a personnel matter. A second, please.
I second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.